It's really quiet, so I'll call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. The first item on our agenda this evening is to establish the fact that we have a quorum of our board team. All of our board members are here. Appreciate everyone being here. That's item one. Item two is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Scott Bradford, the senior pastor at First Methodist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation. Thank you Pastor Bradford.
Let us pray. Almighty and gracious God, we thank you for this time to come, and I ask your spirit to enter into this room and to be with this board and to this school system. And we ask, oh Lord, that you would be among us and that you would be in our hearts and our minds. And Lord, we know this has been a difficult year with COVID and changes, and Father God, we just pray for leaders everywhere that are making decisions, sometimes just at the split second, and then only to find later, a different decision needs to be made. So we pray for those leaders that are put into those roles. And Lord, and we pray for students and faculty and administrators, and I thank you, Lord, for these students here with their poster winners, and they represent our future. So I pray a blessing on them and upon their work, and may this be a great year of learning despite the difficulties, and may they excel to be a future generation of leaders. We ask all of this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Reverend Bradford, thank you so much for being here. Our next item is our recognitions, and I'm going to take those a little bit out of order. Oh, sorry, we have our pledges. Yeah. So let me announce our group that's doing our pledges from our Girl Scout. They're from Girl Scout troop 5024. We have Allison Flint, who's from Bowie Elementary. We have Sophia Elizondo, also from Bowie, and we have Liza Pale from Fort Concho. If y'all will stand, we'll do our pledges.
At my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the gorgeous lands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the D.C., Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good job ladies. Hang on if somebody wants to take up girls. Ladies, ladies. If y'all want to come back, then somebody that's with you might want to take a picture We'll let parents take some pictures. Thank y'all again. We appreciate y'all being here. Thanks for reminding me of that. I don't know why I skipped that. I marked off three before I got to three. Our next item is item four, recognitions. We're going to move D to A and A to D, so the first one is recognitions of school board as an honor board, and our executive director for communications, Whitney Woods, is going to help us with that.
Good evening, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Layman, distinguished members of the board and guests. We're so proud of all of our artwork kiddos here tonight. Tonight, we have several well-deserved recognitions, and we're happy to reverse order, that's fine. We have a very special recognition we would like to celebrate with you, Mr. Layman, and our incredible group of board members. You all do so much for our community and students, and we thank you for that. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Detloff to say a few words about the honor board award and your dedicated service.
Thank you, Whitney. Mr. Layman, members of the board. Created by the Texas Association of School Administrators in 1971, the School Board Honors Program recognizes those school boards that have demonstrated outstanding dedication and rendered ethical service to the children of Texas. Each of you have put in numerous hours of dedicated work to improve the quality of education and the lives of our San Angelo ISD students and community members. You listen to your hearts and minds, and you do the work with our district to find solutions to prepare our students for future success and to help them achieve their individual hopes and dreams. The School Board Honor criteria highlights boards that have shown evidence of support for educational performance improvement. This year, our San Angelo ISD Board of Trustees was selected as the Region 15 Honor Board. Out of 43 school districts in Region 15, our SAISD Board was selected to represent our region in the State of Texas Board of the Year recognitions. In San Angelo, through the efforts and resources provided by our board, our most recent academic accountability rating of our district improved to a solid B rating as defined by the Texas Education Agency's A through F rating system. We continue to be proud of that B, and will continue all efforts to see all students succeed. We are also continued to be impressed by the many successes of our students and teachers in San Angelo ISD, and this is made possible by our board's governance and focus on student success in all endeavors. Also, our board team has been masterful in navigating a global pandemic and demonstrating crisis leadership in a sustained period of disruption. In fact, out of approximately 2,000 employees, we only have 12 staff members quarantined or tested positive for COVID-19. That's 12 out of 2,000. On the student side, out of 12,500 in-person students, we only have 21 students quarantined or positive. Also, despite many differing perspectives across our state, our Board of Trustees knew that starting school on time in San Angelo was extremely important not only to student learning, but to support our local economy, our working parents, and the many parents of SAISD students involved in the healthcare and medical professions in San Angelo. This awards program is an excellent opportunity to reward hard-working and dedicated board members with the recognition they deserve. Thank you, board team, for volunteering your time, efforts, and passion to create a quality public school experience in San Angelo. Tonight, along with the Texas Association of School Administrators, we are recognizing your hard work and dedication as the Region 15 Honor Board. Our trustees include Lanny Layman, Gerard Gallegos, Amy Mizell Flint, Max Parker, Bill Dindel, Art Hernandez, and Dr. Taylor Kingman. Thank you.
And we have this lovely plaque that we can't wait to show off over in our foyer.
Thank you, Whitney, and thanks, Dr. Detloff. It's an honor for me to serve as a member of this board team. I think we have a wonderful board group. Our next item is item A. We're going to move to item A, which is recognition of fire prevention posters and contest winners. We have a lot of young people here, and we congratulate y'all.
Hello. Okay. You may have seen the beautiful artwork greeting you as you entered our building tonight. We are celebrating our budding young artists by recognizing our SAISD Fire Prevention Poster Contest winners. Not only are these elementary students talented artists, they also helped their campus communicate important information about actions they can take to stay safe during a fire emergency. We are so proud of each of you, as are your teachers, principals, some of the principals are here tonight, and family members here with you today. We will start by announcing our third grade winners, followed by fourth and fifth grade. When I call your name, please come forward and remain standing facing the audience for a group photo with your grade level. So I'm going to start with third grade. So from third grade, we have Melody Early from Fort Concho. And then we have Ms. Sophia Perez from Goliad. And we have Victoria Robertson from San Jacinto. And the last of our third grade bunch is Camila Morales Valdez from San Jacinto. And if you ladies can remain there for just a minute, we're going to get a group photo with Dr. Detloff. He's so proud of you, as are all of us. Congratulations. And then we have our fourth grade poster winners. We've got Riley Gonzalez from Bel Air. We have Aiden Guzman from Lamar. And we have Caroline Fluger from Santa Rita. And Samuel Weatherrell from Bonham. Y'all can wait just a minute, we'll get to your photo too. And now we have our fifth graders. Our fifth grade poster winners are Livia Garcia from Altaloma. We have Sophia Blankenship from Fort Concho. Carson Bowles from Santa Rita. And last but not least, we have Mary Catherine Darby from Santa Rita. Congratulations, and keep up the great work. We also appreciate the San Angelo Fire Prevention Office for not only bringing us this wonderful contest and campaign to educate our students and families, but also for all you do to keep us safe every day. And Mr. Layman, we were thinking we'd go on to the Walmart one and end with the principals.
Our next one is recognition of Walmart stores. Ms. Johnson's going to do this for us. Thanks, Molly.
Good evening, Mr. Layman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Tonight is my great pleasure to honor a very generous donation from our local Walmart stores to our school campuses. Both the Walmart Neighborhood Market on Knickerbocker and Sherwood Way donated a variety of school supplies to San Angelo ISD with a total of 683.33 cents. This donation will help San Angelo ISD provide necessary supplies to students in our district who other ways may not have access to them. This evening, we are honored to have the members of the Walmart staff with us. Dr. Detloff, at this time, would you please help me recognize the Walmart staff members who are here this evening? Mr. Greg Duke, Mr. Daniel Harris, and Ms. Rachel Sloan, if you'd please come forward for a photo?
One of the great things that we've seen is a testament of what this region can do by the leadership of Ms. Larry, Mr. Larry, who came to the store, and then all of what the city, what the board has done. One of the best things seen in every eye and every parent in this building is the fact of you are the future leaders of our area, of the world. Never let anything stop you from what you can accomplish. And so just Walmart being a store of the community, we want to make sure that we perpetuate that to every individual, because every household has the right to change the world for a positive impact, okay? And we did bring $400, $400 extra dollars, so we updated the check to reflect over 1,000, because that was our commitment. We wanted to give over 1,000 to the school and keep representing each and every day. So we definitely appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank y'all so much, Daniel. And now, we have no respect for order whatsoever, because I messed up, but our last recognition is recognition of National Principals Month, and Ms. Woods is going to do that for us. Thank you.
Okay. October is National Principals Month, so this month, we extend an extra special thank you to our principals who work so very hard, particularly this year as we face new challenges. Our principals stepped up when it mattered most. We recognize their tireless devotion to our students, schools, and staff that shines through every day. The principal's role is absolutely crucial to the success of our schools. Principals are instructional leaders, cheerleaders, active listeners, coaches, friendly faces, reminders of what is right and wrong, and leaders of professional learning among a myriad of other duties. On any given day, you may see a principal appraising teachers, playing a pickup game of four-square with third graders who need a little extra attention, meeting with concerned parents, planning a safety drill, unclogging a drain in the bathroom, organizing a community event, and that's all before 10:00 a.m. San Angelo ISD principals are district leaders who care deeply for our students, staff, families, and community. Please join me in recognizing our wonderful principals. In elementary, we have at Altaloma, Lori Herndon; at Austin, Brooke Comback; at Bel Air, Laura Eubank; at Bonham, Heidi Wurza Whiskey; at Bowie, Darius Flowers; at Bradford, Bertha Carrasco; at Crockett, Clayton Hubbard; at Fannin, Kathy Humble; at Fort Concho, Lori Barton; at Glenmore, Terri Gold; at Goliad, Shannon Klepak; at Holloman, Ginger Luther; at Lamar, Jennifer Ryan; at McGill, John Ritter; at Reagan, Brandy Tyner; at San Jacinto, Kimberly Spurgers; at Santa Rita, Kay Scott. And then at our secondary level, we have at Carver Learning Center, which is also PACE, Claudia Becerra; at Glenn Middle School, Michael Comback; at Lee Middle School, Amy LaMaster; at Lincoln Middle School, Joe Gandar; at Central High School, Bill Waters; and at Lakeview High School, Zach Ramirez. Tonight, in light of social distancing and anticipated crowd, we invited our principals to zoom in for the recognition, and we have Mr. Gandar here to accept on behalf of all of our wonderful principals. Mr. Gandar, will you come up at this time to accept on behalf of the principals? And finally, in closing, we want to share a video we put together as a small thank you to our principals for their dedication, visionary leadership, and resolute pursuit of success. So please join us in watching the video on these screens.
The boss of the school.
Someone that stays in their front office and helps out.
Principal is a person who tries to keep their students educated and safe.
Someone who takes care of the school.
To make sure the people are being nice and being nice to other, treating the people who are treating others what they want to be treated.
The boss of the school.
To take care of the school. No, I don't know.
A principal is like someone who's the king of the school.
It's supposed to take care of our school and keep us safe.
Someone who is in charge of the school.
He rules the school. He helps children out.
The job of a principal is to maintain the school and make sure it doesn't go into chaos.
A principal's job is to organize everything that's going on in the school.
To like run errands and make sure like everybody's doing really good.
Her job is like protect the school and like make sure like we're all safe.
To keep us safe and to make sure everyone behaves.
He keeps people safe.
A principal's job is like running the school.
A person that is like a manager of the school.
To protect others and make sure people are on task.
The principal is somebody that's willing to do what's right for the school.
Like when somebody gets in trouble, when we're in trouble, they go to the principal's office.
She doesn't want any kid to be bad.
Or she'll have to go mean to them.
Where some kid's up, he gets him in trouble.
I know one thing, it means if someone's like, if someone's doing something bad, they have to come and get them.
Keeps track of the schedule of the school.
He's on the playground, like playing four-square with us.
Principal is call people.
She helps the school.
She tells the teachers what to do.
Make sure everybody is in the right spot.
She watches us at the cafeteria to make sure we're be good.
Well, he is a principal, so he does do a lot.
But basically, she does like a bunch of paperwork, and whenever she's like free, she has free time, she goes to cafeteria and makes sure we're all being good.
He helps with the cafeteria, and he goes in the mornings and says hi to us in the classrooms.
So one time in second grade, he did a backhand spring for us.
She walks around in different classes to see if we're doing good, and if there's a conflict or anything, she helps out with it.
I don't know.
I help kids.
They work at their office.
She helps with the community.
You have to deal with people that are hard to deal with.
To show people the right example of what you should do.
I see her outside doing traffic duty, and then I see her in the lunchroom sometimes, and then she comes into my classroom.
Tell the teachers what to do, so like, so the teachers can tell us what to do.
Sometimes I see her just walking around the room and checking up on people in their classrooms.
She makes us, our brains stronger and mighty.
A principal works inside her office.
She works really hard on papers.
I feel like he's a really nice guy. He's really funny, and I feel like he does his job really well.
I think he's kind, and he's fun.
He's the best principal I've had.
She doesn't act mean or anything.
I think she's really nice and kind to us.
He's a very, very hardworking man.
She's nice. She's not one of those mean principals.
He's nice, and he makes our school great.
I love her.
He's so nice.
She's very kind.
I think she is really, really smart, and I think she's the best to be a principal.
She's fun.
Nice and really kind.
She does a lot of things to make us really happy.
She's an incredible, you know, principal.
She gets funny sometimes.
She's nice and respectful.
Sometimes she can be strict, but that's only because she wants you to be the best that you can.
She's a nice principal.
She's really funny.
He's kind, respectful, and nice.
She pushes us to be the best that we can, and she's just so great.
He's very nice, and I always can trust him.
Gives us candy.
That she gives us lots of goodies and gifts if we be special.
He does a really good job of principal. That's not a word, but...
That she lets us do really creative stuff.
He looks like me.
She shows a lot of empathy, and like whenever you're going through things, she like walks in your shoes, I would say.
She wears high heels.
He's the best principal I've ever had.
That she takes care of everyone in the school.
She's always willing to go wherever she has to go to help the school.
She helps me to make good choices.
Thank you, principals.
Thank you, principals.
Thank you.
Thank you, principals.
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 Thank you, principal.
Thank you, principals.
Thank you, principals. Thank you.
Thank you, principals.
Thank you, principal.
Thank you, principals.
Thank you, principals.
Thanks, ladies. That concludes our recognitions this evening. I do want to read our script. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Those of you who are present with us this evening... We can call the meeting to order. It's according to my want. It's pretty good. And those of you who might be watching the tape recording of our meeting on Public Access Channel, Channel 4, tonight's meeting is a regular meeting of our board team, and all items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our pre-agenda board workshop. As required by Texas state law, these meetings will be recorded, so that our tape might adequately reflect our proceedings. I ask that you please refrain from speaking while others might be speaking. I also ask you to turn off or silence your cellphones at this particular time. A record of our meeting will become a part of San Angelo Independent School District's permanent legal record. Also, I would remind you that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. With that in mind, I will remind everyone that we'll give everyone a chance to speak to items not on our agenda this evening, and anyone wishing to make comments on items on our agenda, I'll ask for those comments when that particular item, when our board team's addressing that particular item. Again, I thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate your interest in our students and the business of our district. With that covered, I know you parents, if y'all want to get out of here, and it came for fire protection, that would be great if you want to sit and go through our meeting, that would be great too. Okay, and Ms. Woods said, be sure and grab your ribbons as you leave. Buy your artwork. So your ribbon will be posted by your artwork, so be sure and grab those on your way out. Again, we really appreciate y'all, and congratulations for your hard work. I think Ms. Woods knows this, but as this group clears out, then we can invite some others to come Item five on our agenda is the approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes? So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Do we have any questions or comments or any corrections to the minutes? Yes, I'm sorry. So do we have any corrections or further comments from our board team? If not, all in favor, a motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, indicate by saying no. I referenced this in my... Aye, any opposed indicate by saying no. I referenced this in my comments earlier, uh this is, item six is for anyone in the public wishing to make comments on items not on our agenda. Uh so we, I think we have two folks signed up to do so, uh the first of, of that group is Mr. Miller. Uh so, Mr. Miller, would you please come forward that, and you can use that microphone. Thank you for being here, sir.
I'm Larry Miller, I've been up here before, so you know I'm a retired air force veteran and also a high, a former high school teacher and a member of the American Legion here in town. San Angelo's annual Veterans Day Parade is now scheduled for Saturday, the 7th of November. However, at this time, the veteran organizations of the Concho Valley have been informally told that there will be no participation by either the Lakeview or Central High School bands or any of the middle school bands or by any of the junior ROTC groups. This is despite the fact that as far as we can tell, the two high school bands and probably the junior ROTC groups have performed at several, if not all, of the season's football games, at times riding several hours in a bus to go to out of town games as far away as Shirts, Texas, near San Antonio. Our concern on this is also directed at the five military services represented at Goodfellow Air Force Base. At this time, only the Army and Army Battalion and the Marine Corps detachment will be participating. We've also been further advised that the Angelo State ROTC detachment will also not be participating. If this is true, if this is true, it should, it is not just an embarrassment to SAISD, but also for the entire community that on the single day of the year scheduled for our country to honor the service and sacrifice of some of our country's greatest heroes, that the veterans of Tom Green County will be dishonored in this manner. You simply can't tell me that using common sense and social distancing at an outdoor, fresh air event and using masks where masks are feasible cannot keep everyone, parade participants, onlookers and all the members of these bands and groups reasonably safe from infection for just a few hours. You owe this much to your veterans. Now, I genuinely hope that what I've just told you is not, not in fact true, but I believe that this certainly needs to be clarified for the entire San Angelo community on your Facebook page.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, we appreciate that and we'll have someone contact you to provide some clarity to that question. Our next item, actually we have one other person who's wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening and that would be Nelda Nallin. Ms. Nallin? Thank you for being here. Take your time.
I'm sorry, there were a lot of people that signed up in front of me, so I guess my.
Well, the reason why, yeah, yeah, your item, the reason why we moved you forward is.
It's alright.
Okay.
It's alright. I've been up here before. I continue to address academic success of all students. According to the Texas Education Agency in 2019, which was the last year of the STAR test, this was a ranking of San Angelo ISD schools. Five schools had an F, that's from the Texas Education Agency. They ranked five schools with an F. Austin, Bel Air, Goliad, Holloman and Lincoln. Three schools had a D, that's Lamar, San Jacinto and Lee, which is being contested because of the name. San Angelo ISD state rankings, according to schooldigger.com, has fallen from being in the 45th percentile in 2012 to being in 21.3% in 2019. Let me try to make a correlation as to what that would mean. When you take a school such as Lee, which has a D, and you look at how, how do they get that ranking, you discover that 61% of the students at Lee do not read on level. What difference will that make? Well, they won't do as well as they could in English, science, history, anything that involves reading. So, we need to concentrate on how are we going to improve students academically. It may be because we have to run extra classes, we may have to have two classes in reading for the students that are lower. How will that translate? Well, how do those kids in high school get those wonderful academic scholarships? They get them because they do well in classes. And so I would like to see us look at programs that will improve academics at the schools that need the academic improvement. I'm sorry, coming up the stairs made me out of breath. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you for those comments. Okay, that's the only two I had that wished to speak on items not on our agenda, I think we have a number of others that are signed up uh to speak on our agenda item that um concerns the potential renaming of um retention of the name or renaming of Robert Lee Middle School, that's item 10 on our agenda. So I'll move forward to um reports. Our student enrollment report is provided to board team members in each of our Friday facts. The latest uh report or actually the report from October 5th of 2020, which was the 7th Monday of school, indicates that we're down about 500 students versus the same time last year. We consistently work with our, our administrative team to try to locate students who are no longer attending our schools and we've been pretty consistent with that throughout this year. Our next item is in reports is item B, an update on academic progress and I'll turn it over to Jana if she wants to take that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Lehman and members of the board. So for our academic report tonight and this evening's academic report will actually be focused on some points of data from the first quarter of this school year. We've been so pleased with the success of our in-person students as well as our students working so hard in our virtual learning platform. Tonight, I will share some highlights that we are reviewing as evidence of student progress and accomplishments. We are extremely proud of the efforts of our teachers and administrators in creating the conditions for success for SAISD students. First, I would like to share thanks to our phenomenal classroom teachers who have provided unprecedented levels of support for our students through differentiation, interventions and constant progress monitoring. We are pleased to see levels of academic progress for our students through strong communication and involvement practices along with tracking through our Panorama data platform is helping us to respond effectively and immediately to our student needs. So with this academic progress, this is showing the percentage of students exhibiting academic progress since starting this, starting this school year, August through October. In elementary, 92%, middle school, 85% and high school, 82%. And this is again um in light of even with the challenges of the COVID pandemic and our students not being in school for many months since March of last school year, so we are very happy to see that our students are exhibiting progress and success as they are engaging in learning in our schools. The next highlight, um we would like to focus again on, you know, as we're building the literacy skills of our students in San Angelo ISD, that we know that we had recognized that our students were struggling with literacy. And that is something that our school board has very graciously um invested heavily in over the years. And so we are now seeing these students who way beyond any kind of um with STAR test, which is a one-day test score with one measure, we are looking at reading levels that are actual reading levels of our teachers working closely with our students. And our percentage of elementary students right now is showing increases in their individual reading level even August through October because of the efforts of our teachers, our administrators, our parents helping our students, 92% of those students who are showing those increases. We're really pleased to say that we are seeing great increases with our students who are very excited. Those who are in person in school, working with their teachers every single day in their guided reading groups and with one-on-one interventions that we are providing for our students. Next, we would like to also highlight our college career and military readiness. This is something that our school district traditionally does very well in. And right now, our district score projected for this with combined both high schools is a 93. This is a very high number on this score for college and career and military readiness for our students. And what goes into this is, um and it counts 40% of our high school accountability. STAR, the one test on the one day, counts only 40%. Our graduation rate will count 20% and the college career military readiness score will provide, will be 40%. This includes our scores on the SAT, the ACT, the Texas School Initiative, the Success Initiative, which is College Readiness, TSI, AP tests that our students take when they, when they are in um advanced placement classes, our CTE coherent courses, which is College Technical Education, enrollment in our advanced placement and dual credit courses, which we have many students who are graduating with upward of 40 hours of college credit by the time they graduate from high school at both of our high schools. And military enlistment. So we actually are very pleased that TEA now does include college career and military readiness as part of your accountability for the state. And we're very proud of our projected district score that this would be reflecting in this year's accountability. And lastly, we wanted to highlight this past week, we had our students at both of our high schools who participated in PSAT and the SAT test. Um that was, we have that now on a school day, we have not always done it that way. But last Wednesday, we had students who participated in this and we now universally do the PSAT for all of our ninth graders, all of our 10th graders, all of our 11th graders. And then we allow our seniors who have not already taken the SAT on their own, we pay for it and we provide them a school day to take their SAT at school. Yeah, and it is great and they have, we have excellent participation and this right here reflects the success of our students and we're extremely proud of this. On our school day testing cohort from last year, we don't have our results yet from this year. They just took it on Wednesday, but we'll have them soon. Those results reflect 20 points higher than the state average score. And this also represents a continued increase of gains year to year with our focus on the universal PSAT and the SAT school day. So we feel that with these indicators that we're highlighting tonight, we're happy to say that the efforts of our teachers and the work of our students is being evident and we're seeing that evidence on a daily basis and as we reflect every quarter on all of our data for our campuses. So we appreciate your support as a school board for always providing our students what they need in these areas. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter, any questions for Jana? From our board team?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is item eight, those are items that we would cover on our consent agenda, do we have a motion to approve items A through F?
Motion to approve items A through F for consent.
Second.
Motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Hernandez to cons, uh approve our consent items A through F. Item A is to consider donations. Item B is to consider the approval of our annual portfolio. Uh this is our investment portfolio report ending August 31st of 2020. Item C is to consider our 2020, 2021 authorized list of investment brokers and dealers. Item D is to consider our 2021 authorized list of investment training providers. Item E is to consider approval of CDA local investment policy for the SAISD. And item F is to consider bid number 20 dash 009. This is our, uh an item for maintenance, transportation and miscellaneous supplies. I would remind everyone that's here in attendance tonight as well as those who might be watching our uh the tape recording of this meeting, that all these items have been previously adjust, previously discussed at a, uh our pre-agenda board workshop, which was last Tuesday. Uh any further comments concerning our consent items?
Mr. Lehman, I just noticed we, I probably need to pull item F. Some of the maintenance supplies, my company does supply, does.
Okay.
Sorry to recuse myself.
Okay, so.
I'd like to add that we did have a lot of new.
Turn your mic on, Jordan, I'll let you add it.
I just wanted to comment that we did have a lot of new uh suppliers that, that have been added, so that's, that's, that's great news, I think we're doing business with them, so.
Okay, so um even though.
Can I amend my motion for A through E to make those consent and then we'll do F separately?
That's perfect. Okay, so do we have a second to that?
I'll amend my motion to go items A through E consent and we'll pull F as a consent item.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a, um, a reworded motion from um Dr. Kingman and, and a new second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board questions or comments? All in favor of uh consent items A through E, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed indicate by saying no, our motion passes. Our next item is item F, thanks, Mr. Dental. I would remind um everyone that uh Mr. Dental is actually not required to reclusive himself by state law. Um it depends on how much of your earnings that you have on an annual basis or uh earnings that come from the school district, but we as a school board, if, if at any point in time. I told everybody to turn their phones off. Except mine. I forgot where I was. Um I would, um, so Mr. Dental will recuse himself from, from this particular vote. So we have, do we have a motion to approve item F?
I move to approve item F, bid number 20 hyphen 009, maintenance, transportation and miscellaneous supplies uh to approve the vendors that are on the uh attached bid sheet that we've been provided.
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Parker, we have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed indicate by saying no, our motion passes. You can go get Bill if you don't mind and Becky will indicate that our vote was 6-0 on that particular item. Our next item is item nine, consider bills and accounts and financial statements for the month of September 2020, do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dental, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Hernandez, so we have a motion and a second to um consider our bills and accounts and financial statements for the month of September 2020, do we have any board comment or questions?
Mr. Lehman, in our effort at transparency, all of these reports can be found online, uh you'll find the actual transparency tab or at our website, SAISD.org.
Thanks, Mr. Dental, any other board comments or questions concerning our bills, accounts and financial statements? Again, just to remind everybody present this evening and those who might be watching this on our public access channel, these were all items that we reviewed at our pre-agenda board workshop last Tuesday. Other board comments, any public comment concerning our agenda item nine? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed indicate by saying no, our. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider retention of name or renaming of Robert E. Lee Middle School. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Detloff for some comments.
Mr. Lehman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to recap the extensive four-month process our school board initiated to review, research, and gain public input in regard to the retention or potential renaming of Lee Middle School. This evening, I will extend on my remarks from last week's pre-agenda meeting, as well as clarify our process. First, I want to thank all of our community for their participation in our public summits, completing the survey, participating in public comment during our board meetings, and attending our focus groups. Focus groups included invitations sent to 25 local pastors, central high school feeder pattern senior class presidents from the 1960s to the present day, Lee Middle School teachers and faculty, and current high school students. Differing viewpoints are what anchor our democracy, and it continues to be an honor to serve a city and a school system where we debate our differences in productive and peaceful ways. As we know, school districts and local governments are wrestling with this important and challenging topic across our state and nation. In fact, San Angelo ISD is not unique in that many of our public school colleagues in Texas, such as Midland, Abilene, Tyler, Goose Creek ISD, and others, are working through similar situations. I do want to take time to highlight that our board and district have created an extensive process that will culminate this evening with either a decision to retain or rename Lee Middle School. Your decision to engage in an open process is to be commended. Irrespective of the result tonight, thank you for providing our community multiple opportunities to share their perspective. Previously, our Board of Trustees and many members of the public have asked for a cost analysis for a potential name change. The cost analysis was provided last week at our pre-agenda meeting. This analysis, provided by our current athletic uniform vendor and a construction firm that specializes in athletic flooring, came in at $74,068. The cost associated with renaming a middle school is not nearly as comprehensive as a high school. As mentioned last week, middle schools in San Angelo are currently averaging a two-year uniform replacement cycle, and these reoccurring costs are integrated into our annual budget. If action is to be taken, the Lee Middle School gym floor will need to be sanded, repainted, and recoded, and this cost was listed as well last week. If needed, these potential costs are available in our current budget and will not result in a tax increase. Our yearly allocation in our maintenance and operations budget includes estimates for operational costs, both anticipated and unexpected. Last week, we provided a summary sheet from our advisory council as they helped synthesize and pull out key findings from our four-month engaging equity process. Of special interest was a question that referred to a potential renaming. A name that surfaced to the top during the advisory council findings was Concho Valley Middle School. And other data collected, Lone Star, Liberty, and Legacy, which was recently chosen by Midland ISD for their high school, were also mentioned as potential names. At this time, I also want to clarify a misconception that has been brought forth in letters, conversations, and phone calls to many of our school board members this past week. Our Board of Trustees plans to follow our CW local policy. This policy states that if the name of a campus is removed, our board and superintendent will accept nominations in writing, and a potential renaming would appear on the next two regular board meeting agendas. That would include our November meeting and then final reading and approval in December. In an effort at transparency, the results of our four-month-long process that included a community survey, open summits, and focus group data were provided at our last board meeting. I do want to clarify for our community, the potential names of schools listed in our handout last week were generated through the process from our public, our students, and any constituents who participated in our process. These names, as listed in media and social media outlets this past week, were not generated by our Board of Trustees or administration. It is important to know that our, for our public to know, that our board votes to rename Lee Middle School this evening. If they choose to rename and vote for Lee Middle School, then, or any other campus name, that has not been decided. So, this is a continued process, and a name has not been decided, nor has it been decided at this moment, because we want to hear community input, nor has it been decided if we will retain the name or rename Lee Middle School. The administration recommends our board follow our local CW policy as a guide in making your decision to retain or rename Lee Middle School. Again, thank you for your commitment to students, staff, our school district, and community. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. Appreciate those comments and clarifications. Our, normally, the way we handle comment on items, not on our agenda, we have a motion and a second, and then we ask for a comment. Well, we discussed at our pre-agenda board meeting last week, changing that to some degree tonight, and that, the change in that is that we're going to have public comment from anyone wishing to make comment prior to us having the motion. So, that gives everyone an opportunity in this room to be sure and have the opportunity to let the board know their thoughts and their comments and their opinions prior to anyone making a motion. And our boards agreed to do that. So, with that said, I want to remind everybody, as I always try to do, that, and we've done better at this, but not great, I would encourage everyone to remember that we have five minutes. We have a lot of people wishing to speak tonight. I would, you're not respectful of others if you speak longer than five minutes and someone else is, restricts their comments or, or only comments for five minutes. So, do your best possible, in every possible way, to limit your comments to five minutes. I'll interrupt you at five minutes. Ms. Hopkins keeps time for us, and I'll do so as politely as possible and remind you that your time's up, and could you close your thoughts? If, for some reason, you have something that's, that you would, that you didn't get to say, then please do so, that you feel is really important, please do so during those final comments. We've been real good at this as well. I encourage everyone to have total respect for others. This is a school board meeting. I'd appreciate us having no foul language. We've had a couple of times where, during our last three months, where somebody said something about somebody on social media, and it spilled over into our meeting, and next thing you know, they're talking about each other rather than talking about our issue. I would much rather we deal with our issue. So, I challenge everyone to do that. And then, certainly, my final reminder to everyone is, please let your comments represent the best of you and the best of our community rather than otherwise. So, with those comments, I'll move forward. The first one wishing to make comments to our board team is Mr. Kevin Huddleston.
It's good to be here, and I appreciate this opportunity. I just wanted to take a moment and say that I have served in this community for 35 years, served as youth and family minister, and I have taken our children, many of your children, on retreats and camps and mission trips. I have done the weddings and a few funerals, too many funerals for our children. I have spent time with, with the children of this community, with families in this community for the last 35 years. And there are a lot of things that I've learned from our students. Some of those things that we think are really important are not as important to them. And yet, there are things that are very important to them that sometimes we pass off. When all is said and done, brick and mortar and names on a building will only go so far in shaping a generation. What will shape this generation is not brick and mortar. What will shape this generation is what they see in us as a community as we interact with one another. If we treat one another with disrespect and hate and anger, it will shape a generation in a way that we do not desire. If, however, we treat one another with respect and kindness and an eye for the future and for the very best of this community, we will see a generation of students rise up in San Angelo that will do things beyond what we can imagine. So, my challenge is to all of us to move forward with respect and kindness and goodness and hope for the very best. Those things are expressed in the way we speak to one another, in the way we interact with one another in person and certainly on social media. It is my prayer that we will treat one another with kindness. I have dear friends that stand on both sides of this issue. When all is said and done, we will remain friends. I have seen San Angelo do great things over the years, and I am confident that this community will rise above the anger and the hatred that we have seen throughout this country. I am confident that San Angelo will stand out as an example to others in how to do hard things. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Huddleston. We appreciate those comments. Our next person wishing to speak to our board team is Lisa DeHoyos. Mr. DeHoyos, thank you for being here.
Good evening to all of you. First, I want to thank all of you for your hard work in a very challenging school year. I'm sure your team is feeling pressure from several directions and on several different topics. I appreciate all of your hard work, thoughtfulness, and patience as we conclude discussions on the topic of renaming Robert E. Lee Middle School. My name is Lisa DeHoyos. I was born and raised in San Angelo, Texas, and now raise my son here. Have a great job. I own my home and pay taxes here in this beautiful city. Living here all my life, I have experienced the goodness of the people who live here. I have also watched it grow and develop to meet the needs of its residents. I care deeply about keeping our city and school system safe, compassionate, and moving in the right direction, just like all of you. I attended Robert E. Lee Middle School from 1998 to 2000, when the grade levels at the school were still seventh through ninth. At that time, I truly didn't realize who our mascot was or what he represented. I was very involved in athletics, choir, National Junior Honor Society, and much more. And I clearly remember wearing shirts with the Confederate flag and cartoon depictions of General Lee holding his sword high. I have the yearbooks at home labeled Confederate on the front cover. I had many black friends at the time who also had to wear these shirts, sing the chants, and buy the yearbooks to remember their friends. It's heartening now as an adult to know I took pride in something I knew very little about. Fast forward 20 years, and in speaking with my black friends about this issue now, the majority sentiment is that they knew who General Lee was and what he represented, but tried not to think about it on a day-to-day basis. And this saddens me. I wonder how many more 11- to 13-year-olds have felt this way over the years or feel this way right now. My son is now in middle school at Glenn, and I've spoken with him about this issue. And while he may not know every detail about General Lee, ultimately, his view is that if it affects or offends his friends, if it makes it hard for them to learn or focus, then why are the adults making such a big deal about changing it? "Just do it," he said. My son isn't political. He simply cares about his classmates and peers and doesn't quite understand why this is an issue. Everyone has their own beliefs about General Lee, and while I do value that he represents a part of American history, his life ultimately served today's America in a negative way. His legacy is debatable at best, and at worst, it's a legacy of slave ownership and fighting on the wrong side of history. I know all of you understand that changing the name of this school does not change the fact that he was part of history and does not keep him from being remembered for educational purposes in history books and museums. Some stand firmly in the reasoning that changing the school's name is erasing history. But as we all know, history can never be erased. General Lee's history will always be safe from being forgotten because it also has the unique ability, but it also has the unique ability to teach us a lesson and help us write a better history in the now. I realize this has been a divisive issue in our community, and tempers can flare when defending one side or the other. I don't see this as a political issue at all. They're simply right and wrong. Our responsibility as a community is to protect and advance our children, all of our children. Every child in our community has the right to feel comfortable and safe in their learning environment. Every child in our community has the right to feel respected and included and have a sense of pride in their school. We're a society that values and is guided by inclusion, acceptance, and equity, not division. Upholding these values will most certainly aid us in writing this better history for our children and their children, and so on. 2020, all around us, school systems are understanding that the names of Confederate Army soldiers and leaders do not belong on or in our schools at all. Instead, you have an opportunity to bring everyone together around a new name that we can all be proud of. Change can be scary, but it's necessary to move this country, this state, and this city forward. And I, for one, am willing to assist the school district, however necessary, to make this name change a reality. Change does not make us weak. It symbolizes growth. And in the words of Maya Angelou, "Do the best you can until you know better, and then, when you know better, do better." This name change would be a small step in the right direction. And I thank you for your time and dedication to the students of San Angelo Independent Schools.
Thank you, Mr. DeHoyos. Okay, I'm getting better at reading everyone's writing, but not so great. Jason Pierce? Good guess, huh? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for being here, Mr. Pierce. We appreciate it.
I didn't get a very good grade in penmanship. I apologize for that. My name's Jason Pierce. I'm a professor of history at Angeles State University. I've spoken a couple of times on this issue, and I've mentioned that I'm strongly in favor of the name change, and that remains true. But I also wanted to come up here to talk about that if we do want to change the name, that it's important that we don't forget the history that already exists. And so, I would like us to take efforts to preserve items and materials from the school, things like uniforms, banners, ephemera like that. As somebody that does this professionally, I'm happy to donate some time and my expertise to helping collect and archive of materials along those lines. So, while I do think we need to think about the future, and the future means we need to change the name, I do think, you know, we don't want to forget the past, and we need to keep some of those things with us as we go forward. So, that's really the only thing I really wanted to say here tonight. But I do want to thank you, the board, Dr. Detloff, for the work that you guys have done. You've listened to hours and hours of testimony, most of it relevant to the topic, some of it not as much. But I do appreciate the seriousness with which you've, you've taken this and how professional the whole process has been. So, very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pierce. We appreciate those comments. Our next individual wishing to speak is Terry Mobley.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Terry Mobley, it's, appreciate the opportunity to be here. Some of you on the board know me. Some of you on the board probably wish you didn't know me. It's an honor to be here. I want to share a little bit with you. I'm not, I haven't taken sides on this at all. I really don't. But I want to use some information that I think, and I'm going to use Robert E. Lee as an example, and I think it would behoove everybody involved to listen to what, some of the decisions he made. We all know why his name is being held as, as not proper for a school. I understand that. I think some things that I learned in, I'm a history buff. I spend a lot of time on history. I love history. But after the war, after- But after the war, after General Lee surrendered to this SS Grant, after the war was over, Jefferson Davis, the president of the Confederacy, had a plan to start trying to do guerrilla warfare. He was promoting that to try to keep the war going. General Lee wrote the president, Jefferson Davis, a letter. He basically shut it down and said, "Listen, this war is over. Our job is to unify this country. That is our only job. We need to unify this country." And I would say that to both sides tonight, regardless of what answer or what decision is made. I'll be honest with you, board, guess what? You're in a no-win situation. If you agree to change the name, there are some that are going to think y'all are just giving in to radical people. If you agree to keep the name, there are some that's going to think you're racist. Guess what? Both of those are wrong. You're neither one. You're doing the best you can with what you've got. Last thing that I will say, and I'm going to be under my five minutes. You know why? Because I used to be in Toastmasters, and we had time limits. I know how to do that. The last comment I will have to make, also from General Lee, when a mother of a Confederate sons, the young boys, approached him one day after the war, and she says, "How am I to raise my sons?" General Lee says, "You raise them as Americans." Regardless of what's decided tonight, I would say to everybody, regardless of what decisions come forth, whether it's renamed or kept the same, raise your children to be San Angelo Independent School District students. I got a little more than five minutes. Here's the other thing. I'm just throwing this in because y'all need to lighten up. This is a tough thing. Be careful how you go down this thing because Mark Twain, bless his heart, don't know this, but he fought for the Missouri militia for a little while. Now, the good thing for the Confederacy is that he, after about two nights, he headed to California and missed the rest of the war, mainly because the first night they heard noise, they started shooting. The next day, they found out they'd killed a farmer's cows. The night after that, they heard noise again, thinking it was Grant's troops coming in. They started firing. They ended up killing their own horses and mules. So had Mark Twain stayed in the militia with Missouri, the war would have been over a lot sooner because he'd have wiped out everybody. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. I don't envy your task. Make your decision with your heart. Make your decision with your heart because everybody's got an opinion. I even have an opinion, but it's not worth much. But here's what I will tell you. Whether I agree with you or disagree with your decision, one thing I will do is support that decision that's being made, and I will stand behind it till my dying day.
Thank you. Is it Swain Dudley?
They don't.
Thank you.
It's simple. It's Wayne with an S.
I know, I know. It's, you're exactly right. It's exactly as it looks, but it's an unusual name. Thank you for being here.
... not well because I went to Lee Junior High, I had 65, and our teacher was gone during our period because she only had two, and I had to sign slips for hall passes the way she signed it. She didn't...
Thanks, Mr. Dudley. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you for letting me come. I've never done this before. So this is a little different. I'm very basic. As a letter I sent y'all says, and I'm glad nobody's shooting back at me, but I tried to just be honest with you. I'm not for this name change. I don't see the point in it. I'm for education. We heard a report today from this young lady that Lee Middle School, I guess that's the name of it now, is rated D. Then we heard another one. Where'd she go? There she is, that we, that middle schools have gone up. Well, there's a lot of room to go up with a D. And I don't see where a name has anything to do with the teaching inside a classroom. The teacher is what makes a school. Whoop with the name, you know, that's nothing. The money that we're on spend on this, some would say, "Oh, $75,000 isn't anything." Well, Bud, $75,000 be a lot in my pocket. And they said, "What's in the budget?" Well, whoopee, does that mean it has to be spent? You know, you have to spend the whole budget. If it can't be moved out of maintenance or whatever, you know, leave it there, and next budget, we'll have $75,000 less that we have to come up with that we might be able to put to students, learning, to equipment, to better education of the teachers on how to get across to the students. Maybe some better counseling to students that are getting ready to follow through. You don't need to stop me so hard because I can get on a roll. But that's what's important, is education, not a blasted school name. School name doesn't mean squat when it comes to education. You know, it's education that we want. And right now, we're really low on education, or the numbers say so, if you believe numbers. Anybody can make up numbers, they say. Well, supposedly ours is being made up low right now. This needs to go forward. We've got leaders here in Angelo that are in school right now, and we need them to come back to Angelo when they get out of college, when they get their masters, when they get their PhD. We need things in Angelo to bring them back to Angelo to make San Angelo better. And I'm put down for this, but I was a trucker. I was also graduated from TCU. I was also in the top fourth of my high school class here in 1968, and it was 716 of us in that class. But the thing of it is, I've talked to a lot of people that look at moving companies. One of the first things they look at is taxes. Next thing they look at is water, and I'm not giving you the right order. Next thing they look at is education. And then they look at employment opportunities. But education is what we need, and spending money on changing a school name, when that money could be left in the budget, maybe pulled out by a special session or whatever, where there's a will, there's a way, most of the time, or it seems like it, and putting more to the education of our students. And I think that is what is very, very, very important. And that name on that building is not going to make a D student become an A student. It's not going to make an A student become an F student or anywhere in between. It's education. And changing the name of a school, I think we're off bounds here. I think we're lost the focus of the ball. As a school board, y'all serve the students. That's what you're here to do. Now then, let's make sure our students have everything they need and our teachers have everything they need to bring us up in the educational level where people don't laugh, and you don't think they do? A lot of them do. Oh, y'all schools, hey, anybody can go there and graduate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have Dr., is it Tanya or Tanya Davis? Thank you, Ms. Davis, for being here.
I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Dr. Tanya Davis. My doctorate is in education. I'm a resident of San Angelo, and I love this community. I plan on staying here for the rest of my life, and I'm happy to pay taxes that contribute to the San Angelo school system. I rewrote my notes throughout the night as I listened to different people come up here and talk. And one of the things that I am shocked about is the differences of opinions on what it takes to educate a student. One of the things that I did when my students were, when my kids were young enough to go to middle school, is I made sure that they understood what school they were going to and that they could be proud of the name. And that's one of the reasons they went to Lincoln Middle School, not that Lincoln was a perfect person, and we had a discussion about that. But I made sure that they went to Lincoln opposed to other schools. Glenn was another school that they could have gone to if we lived closer to it. People are honored when buildings are named after them, and Lee represents a living promotion of abuse and oppression in minority communities. Renaming Robert E. Lee Middle School is vital to changing the perceptions and attitudes in the local community. Renaming the school sends the message to minority community members that their history matters and that supporting slavery is not something to be celebrated. It also sends a message to the white community that celebrating people who were and are wrong is wrong. Renaming the school can be the start to minorities feeling less threatened by the institution that claims equality in education. We need a strong group of leaders to stand up for equality, and I believe you are those leaders here today. We need to teach our children through action that slavery was never okay and that we are evolving to be a better society. We all need truth and hope in our lives, this year more than ever. The decision you make tonight will speak volumes about the types of leaders that you are and who you choose to protect, and I thank you for your time and your attention to this very important matter.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We appreciate your thoughts and comments. Next up, we have Michael Burnett. Thank you, Mr. Burnett, for being here.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to discuss the renaming of Lee Middle School. I'm Mike Burnett, and my family and I have been residents of San Angelo since the summer of 2011. My family in San Angelo dates back to the mid-'60s, when my grandfather, Dick Burnett, began his time as an FBI agent in the San Angelo office. I'm proud of the life of service that my granddad led, always fighting for the underdog. Dick went on to serve as San Angelo's chief of police and also in the Texas House of Representatives, as well as serving with many boards and organizations in San Angelo and the Concho Valley. I learned a lot from him about service, justice, our rights, and what being a U.S. citizen means. Our family ties to San Angelo are strong, with my father and two uncles attending and graduating from SA ISD schools. Our son graduated from Central, and our daughter is currently enrolled at Central. Myself, I grew up in Midland and attended and graduated from Lee High School. You're probably well aware that the Midland Independent School District recently voted to change the name of Lee High School. I am proud of their decision to make that change. Elsewhere in Texas, school boards are voting to make this same change. I am in favor of changing the name of Lee Middle School. Prior to returning to San Angelo in 2011, my family and I lived all over the United States, including four states in the deep south, including Mississippi, Georgia, North Carolina, and Virginia. We also lived in the Midwest for a number of years. Our experiences and friendships in these states helped inform me of how poor a name Robert E. Lee is for a school. It brings glory to someone who should not have that light focused upon him. Living outside of Texas, there are some things that the rest of the United States are envious of Texas for, such as our barbecue and Whataburger. However, there was much confusion when I would say that I was a graduate of Robert E. Lee High School. People were taken aback to learn that we had schools named after the Confederate general. As I have listened to the public commentary on Lee Middle School, I hear a people in support of keeping the name. They state that Lee was a great man, a great general. I'm not here to argue or discuss that. I'm here to restate the fact that Lee was the general of the army that was treasonous to the United States. The states in the Confederacy had slaves and wanted to keep slaves, and the Texas Articles of Succession slavery is mentioned over 20 times. Living in the South, my family and I saw how black Americans were negatively impacted by the legacy of slavery and the social norms through the civil rights era and today that continue to oppress our fellow Americans. When I moved to Oxford, Mississippi for graduate school, there was a giant billboard exclaiming "heritage, not hate." Coming from West Texas, a graduate of Lee Middle, of Lee High School, I was naive at the impacts of that slogan. Unfortunately, I keep witnessing the mistreatment of black Americans by this attitude. I would go so far as to say that the heritage attitude is hate. The pledge of allegiance spoken before this meeting pledges liberty and justice for all. To continue to honor Lee with the name of this, to continue to honor Lee with the name of the school is to continue to devalue the lives of black Americans. As a middle-aged, cis-white American, you don't need to hear this from me. The voices that we should be listening to, the voices that should carry the most in this conversation are those of black Americans. Overwhelmingly, we have heard that it is painful to be constantly reminded that you are a second-class citizen. Let's listen to them and how the name of Lee Middle School affects them negatively. Let's do the right thing and change the name. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. We appreciate your thoughts and comments. Next up is Mrs. Barb Rice. Mrs. Rice, thank you for being here.
Good evening to the board and everybody that's here. I just want to thank God first for this opportunity to be here, and I want to thank the board too for giving us this opportunity to speak. First, I want to say that I put six kids through this school district, and two of them went through Lee. Currently, I have 10 grandchildren in the school district. And from what I could tell you from my six grandchildren, it hadn't really been a pleasant experience for them. A lot of times, they were the only person in their room of color, and that was a big issue too. And a lot of times, it was brought to their attention too, that, okay, you're here all along. I would like to know, anybody here would like to be the only one. 12 years of school, you're the only one of your kind in your room, and you're treated as the only one kind. And I'm not making this up. So I like to say first, I would like to say, we need a seat at the table. I'm looking around this room, and I still feel like we don't have a seat at the table. So unless you have a seat at the table, you will never understand the issue. You can only feel sympathy. But unless it is you, you'll never understand. So I like to say, I'm here to bring my seat to the table. So I just want to let you know that every day, we are reminded with statues, Confederate flags, buildings, establishments, hate groups, street signs, cops, and more importantly, schools with names that we had no seat at the table to help make decisions. So when you're not helping make decisions, you're left out, whether you want to own up to that or not. So I say, how about any of y'all in here? Would y'all like to go to a school named Barack Obama or Black Lives Matter or the Black Stone Rangers? I'm just saying. Would you like your children to be at a school like that and reminded every day? And you know, you're not for those groups, but your kids have to attend every day to a Black Lives Matter school. I think it would be a different attitude, really, if that was the case. But then I like to say, if any group of people in here had to fight for a right to vote, a right to buy houses, a right to go to school, I mean, just we had, we had to have to struggle and fight for every single thing in this country. Some for it, some for... Some for it, some still not for it. But if you want to do the right thing for all, everybody should be included in any decisions that you're making about others. I think so. Everyone should have a seat at the table so you can really understand. And I would like to say, I drove a bus for the school district for 15, 16 years here. I carried a lot of students and stuff, and I listened to a lot of kids and stuff. I listened to my own. I'm not one to make decisions real quick on just because of what my kids say. I like to get all the evidence, all the facts. And then, what makes sense, makes sense. If it don't make sense, it does not make sense. You can't make it make sense if it don't. So I just feel like the name change would be a better, a better change for everybody. We got to start somewhere. Everybody keep talking about the building, don't make a change. All the building is just mortar. It's just mortar. But when you see the name every day, I don't care if it's just a building with mortar, you have to hear that name every day, see that name every day. You don't know what, how a student really feel about that. And then, sometimes you do, and sometimes you don't care. But just like he said, it's mortar, it shouldn't matter. It shouldn't matter. If you're looking at the statistics that the lady quoted about how these grades are failing here, I mean, the schools with Fs and Ds and all of this, so evidently, it's not the name. They still got Ds with the Lee name. So don't say it's just the name doesn't matter, because to some, it does. And General Lee been dead 350 years. Why are we discussing him anyway? Why do we want to live in the past? You say, forget everything. A lot of people that I know say, hey, y'all forget slavery. Y'all quit. We don't have anything to do with that, but you still want us to remember General Lee? You want us to forget about what really happened in America? You know, why move on? Forget about it? You cannot until you address what really went on and have a conversation like we're doing now. Then, it'll never change. And I know it's uncomfortable. It's uncomfortable to everybody.
Ms. Rice, could you close up your comments, please?
Yes. So I'm just saying that my last thing I want to say, this is from a rap song, and I know a lot of y'all don't listen to rap. I really don't listen to rap either, but sometimes I have to hear it with my grandkids. But real quickly, this rap song says, "It's bigger than black and white. It's a problem with the..." It's the problem... Okay, thank you, baby. "It's a problem with the way of life." You know where I'm getting at. It's a, it, I can't change. It can't change overnight, but we got to start somewhere. We done had a hell of a year. I'mma make it while I'm here and say, God is the only man that I fear.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Thank you for being here. We appreciate your comments. Tell you what, board, why don't we, we've got about 13 more, so maybe we can go through five and take a break for about five minutes, if that's okay? So the next person coming up is Ms. Heard, Chelsea Heard. Thank you for being here, Ms. Heard.
My name is Chelsea Heard. I'm the parent of a current student. I wanted to thank you for the numerous opportunities you have afforded the public. While the board was never required to allow open commentary, I am grateful for every opportunity. I hope that it is understood through my activism and through this process. I also hope it is understood that my activism will continue regardless of your decision tonight. I will volunteer myself to aid in the transition should you choose to move forward. Along with what Dr. Pierce said, I think it's a great idea if you do choose to move forward, that we do archive the middle school's history, and I volunteer my time to do what I can with that. I will continue to advocate for the children should our requests be denied. I did not grow up in San Angelo, but my children have. While I have feelings of disappointment hearing the alumni my age and older say that their request to change the name was brushed off because they were children, I have so much hope in the current board, as you have given my daughter an opportunity to be heard even as a student. This board is already the change we so desperately needed. I hope the opportunity to hear and achieve equity continues under your service. Thank you guys again.
Thank you, Ms. Heard. We appreciate your comments. And next up would be Mr. Heard, Devin Heard. Mr. Heard, thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening. My name is Devin Heard, and just want to say thank you for all that you all have done. Thank you for your time, your service, and mostly, your hearts and mind. Tonight is about a future. It's about the future of what the middle school will become. As you might have heard from my last speech, it's all about the sense of pride and excitement to rebrand the school. These meetings have opened hearts to embrace a change. Talking to my daughter and how empowered she felt by speaking earlier this month and last month, I could see a change in her voice and a change in her mind to be more powerful and embrace that. I just want to say thank you again for everything that you all have done, making S.A.I.S.D. a better place for our children.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. We appreciate your comments. Next up, we have Kaylee Cortez. Ms. Cortez, thank you for being with us this evening.
Hello, my name is Kaylee, and I'm a sixth grader at Robert E. Lee Middle School. I would like to start by saying thank you for letting me be a part of the decision and letting me stand up for what I think needed to be changed. Today was my first day in-person on campus, so this means that much more to me now. I don't want Lee or Lady Rebels across my chest as I play a flute and become active in sports. Robert E. Lee, the title Rebels, doesn't represent me or my morals. I have the gun to work for the equity of my peers, and Robert E. Lee doesn't represent that. I care about all humans, and the Rebels Lee led did not. I know I'm just a kid, but I'm speaking as someone who is directly affected by your choice. I hope you choose me. I hope you choose my classmates. I hope you choose equity. I hope you choose humanity. Thank you for your time, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. We appreciate your comments. This next one is Jay Michelle Grooms Reed. Is that correct? Did I get it all right? Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Reed, for being here.
Yes, good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me this time. This is the first time I've come and I've spoken. I've been to several of the meetings, but this is the first time I've spoken. So, Mr. Layman and board members, thank you so much. Jay Michelle Grooms Reed. I came to San Angelo through Goodfellow Air Force Base. My father was stationed here, and I came as, and I was in the, at Junior High, Lee Junior High School is where I came. And I was a student there feeling very torn, having to wear Rebel and a Confederate flag on my T-shirt, knowing that my grandparents, who were very active in the Civil Rights Movement, had taught me, as well as in school, the things about history. So it was disturbing to me to have to wear the Confederate flag when we were at different sporting events. I know that we all in here love San Angelo. We all love this community. And I think that with this consideration that the board is making, and many times I've heard people say that the students, it doesn't matter to the students what the name of the school is, but it does. It affects us. And I can say "us" because I was there, and I was walking through the halls of Lee Junior High. I sat in the classroom and learned from my teacher. But then I had to drive up every day seeing the name and being called a Rebel. I would like to volunteer my time and my money to the change. I will put my money where my mouth is, and I know that it costs $74,000 to change the name. I will donate money. I will help with fundraising, whatever it would take to change the name, because it does matter. When we were watching the films of the children talking about the principals and what was their favorite thing, I was bursting with pride hearing our students talk about how great their principals were. But it really touched my heart when I heard a little boy say, "What do I like about my principal? He looks like me." Think about that statement. Out of everything that he could have said, he said, "He looks like me." Please take into consideration that our children do feel some type of way. Black and Hispanic feel a type of way when they see and hear the name Robert E. Lee. Rebel, Confederate. It means something. So please, when you're making your decision today, take our children and how they feel, as well as the parents of those children, how we all feel hearing that name. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Grooms Reed. We appreciate your comments. And we'll take a break after Mr. Fox, Mac H. Fox. Thank you for being here, sir.
Not much I could add after that. Good evening, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Layman, Ms. Blint, gentlemen of the board. My name is Mac H. Fox. I am the music teacher at Bonham Elementary School. As a native of San Angelo and am proud to say a product of S.A.I.S.D., I went to Travis Elementary School and Glenn Junior High and graduated from Central High School. I am also an employee of S.A.I.S.D., and I wish to express my support for the proposition to rename the Robert E. Lee Middle School campus. As a specials teacher in this district for 14 years, I have often been tasked with the responsibility of teaching the character ed modules on our campus in addition to my responsibilities as the music teacher. It has been my goal to always impart to my students that the values of good character and how a person of good character will act when they show respect to others is very important. I also strive each day to exemplify and teach my students that all students in our class, on our school campus and our district deserve to feel valued, to be included, that they are a person of worth and deserve equality. The historical individual for whom the Lee Middle School campus is currently named for arguably did not reflect those values we now teach. He did not advocate the value of all human beings, just some. He did not support the inclusion of all Americans in the rights of our democracy, just some. His life's work was not dedicated to uplifting our democracy's core belief that all men and women are created equal, just some. How can we, as a district, be true to the beliefs that all men are created equal if we then ask our students to take pride in a campus named for an individual that did not represent those values? At the very least, to retain the campus name, Robert E. Lee Middle School, would be duplicitous and insensitive to the past, present, and future minority students attending school on that campus, and many of them whose ancestors might actually have been individuals General Robert E. Lee fought to keep in slavery. All educators know the only constant in education is change. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, this is one issue that needs change. This is the opportunity for our community and our district to embrace change. Please vote to make this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. It's 7:30 by my watch, so maybe 7:40, so that gives us about nine or 10 minutes for us to take a break. Okay, we're all back, so we'll go ahead and...
I'll call our meeting back to order following our brief recess and break. And I'll wait for Gerard to return. He was here at one point in time. Yeah, once again, I'm really impressed by how we've behaved thus far. So y'all are doing what I ask, which is representing the best of our community. So I appreciate everybody doing that. I'm gonna take a little board president's discretion, and Ms. Parker has to go somewhere to pick up her daughter and ask if I can move her up on our agenda. So I'm going to do that with no objections from our board. So, Ms. Billy Parker. Thank you for being here, Ms. Parker.
Freezer, the plug went out, so I'm having to take my boyfriend over there to fix her freezer. Anyway, well, I've already told all of y'all how I feel about it, that we should keep the name and that it's not only because that I want to keep it, but also because it's the name itself, it's a historical, people can learn from it. It's history. Whenever a student sees it, they can be like, okay, well, let's tell them the whole story. Let's not just be a little... And I do understand of everybody else, and... Okay, I sent y'all a letter. Bring glasses the day that I don't have to read. Okay, I sent y'all an email about something that happened to me, and I thought that my name change after I got divorced would make the pain go away. So I changed it to my mother's maiden name. Whenever I got divorced the second time, and both of them were for the exact same reason because of what happened to me, I changed it back to my maiden name, because changing the name did absolutely nothing to make the pain go away. I still feel it every day. But I think that changing a name because it's something that happened in the past isn't going to change anything. 150 years from now, if somebody sees my father's tombstone, I sure hope they don't want to remove it, even though what he did to me was wrong. 150 years from now, I do not want somebody talking about they're feeling something for my pain. It's my pain, it's nobody else's. So I think changing the name would be wrong. You can get your historical, buy history books. History, a lot of people aren't knowing the whole story, so buy history books. Have teachers teach all sides, not just one. Parents and students, I've said this before, parents and students should never know what a teacher... a teacher feels, their political, anything, how their opinions, they shouldn't know that. They should just know what this teacher's teaching your kids if they're getting good grades. If they're getting bad grades, then yeah, you can discuss, "Okay, well, this is what your kid is doing wrong." I think before this whole thing happened, before anybody should have even brought the subject up, I think, like, at the end of the year, or whenever you're writing to, like, an essay for a college entrance, I think these people should have had written a letter or a speech, I mean, a thesis. They should have did that. They should have been questioned on it. The educator, I'm sure all of y'all are more than educated. I think that they should have had questions and answers, just like whenever you have, pardon me, whenever you have a test. Well, here's your question, give me the answer. I want everything, not just, okay, two plus two equals eleven, no, two plus two equals four. So, and another thing that I've been hearing is a lot of, you have the minorities, the Hispanic, black, but nothing about white. It's supposed to be unity, but they only want to talk about individuals that aren't white. And for my final comment is, should y'all decide to rename the school, which I will support, don't name it after a person. This will happen again if you name it after a person. Somebody is always gonna have something bad to say. Name it after a street. Name it after, he said, Concho Valley. Name it after a place, but not a person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker, for your comments. Ms. Haywood? Is it Ayala?
Angela Haywood.
Oh, thank you. It doesn't look like Angela, but I'll take your word for it. Thank you for being here, Ms. Haywood.
Well, that's because it's in cursive.
I know. Thanks so much for being here.
To the board, I want to thank you all for having me here. I know you saw me with my central mask on, because I graduated from... I also went to Lee, as well as Blackshear, but we won't talk about Blackshear. I have feelings about that, too. Okay? I'm standing here because you all saw my yearbook, all heard me talk about my experiences and that of some of my friends from going to Lee and the treatment that we had. And I can promise you that every person of color knows the history of every Confederate person, every one, because it's talked about in our homes, because our ancestors had to endure some of the racist things that were done to them, because as children, we all heard it. And as far as getting over it, it's just in a name, don't worry about it, it's just brick and mortar, well, we all are shaped by what we are taught in our homes. We all are, whether we think we are or not, we all are. I have heard, look at the bigger picture. There's a bigger picture. You guys are just from outside and you are trying to change every name and just, why not change Tom Green and so on and so forth, and the list is endless. But we're not talking about all of that. We are talking about Robert E. Lee, because that's the only thing that's on this agenda. You want me to look at the bigger picture and to see your side, but I can walk into your world, anyone's world, any nationality, any color. I can walk into your world and I can survive. I can talk, I can speak to you as an adult, and I can communicate with you, and we can come to an understanding, because I was trained to do that. My parents taught me to do that in my home, because I have to speak a certain way, I have to talk a certain way, I have to dress a certain way, I have to wear my hair a certain way, I have to do everything to conform to the other side. All we are asking is for one thing, a seat at this table to help you to make a decision as to whether you should change the name, Robert E. Lee. I think you should. Please change it. Help San Angelo be the diversity that they promote on a daily basis, in commercials. Keep San Angelo beautiful, make San Angelo beautiful, beautify the parks. Do all of those things, but it is your job to live up to the diversity that you are asking for us to send our kids to this school district and to be good citizens of S.A.I.S.D. and of the United States. Exercise your right to vote. Do this, do that, do this, but you still have to conform. When do we have a seat at a table? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. I apologize for not being able to read your name. There's a lot of them in cursive. The next one is Vanessa, and I don't have a last name for Vanessa.
I'm right over here.
Okay, can you give me your last name?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you so much.
Sure. Thank you for being here.
After Ms. Haywood, I'm gonna have a hard time follow up on that one, because I've been crossing my notes all fall evening, many folks. I am for the change of the Robert E. Lee Junior High. The best way, let me go and take off my mask. The best way I can describe who I am, I'm southern-rooted, military-grown, Texas-matured. I came here in nineteen ninety-two, graduated from Central. My daughter, my older daughter, graduated from Central, and I have a younger one that's also in this school district. Sorry about this. Anyhow, I have grew up in the military and I lived in different states, southern states such as Mississippi and Virginia. Junior High is the cornerstone between your elementary schools and your high schools. They spend that time figuring out who they are as people before they have to work on getting ready for the real world. So, when you have to go on and go to a school that had an original way, why it was named and what it was for, that beats a cornerstone on how they will look at that for the rest of their lives. Their papers are gonna reflect that name. Whoever had high schools with that name have to live with that on their high school diplomas. Okay? So, I know that, I had all these notes, hold on, I'm just kinda running on. I'm very proud of being San Angeloan. I mean, I came back home a couple of times, but this is where my family rooted themselves. My youngest siblings graduated here, the lower three of them, and they're still here to this very day. And I have an example to give to my young daughters. They are beautifully blended, they have Mexican-American roots, they have Creole roots, they are a blended family, and I have a lot to teach them on who they are as people, or I have to release them out there. So, in conclusion, I actually had a piece that Frederick Douglass said around the time that Robert E. Lee passed away, and I'm gonna show this, because he was not very happy of all the positive eulogies that this man had upon his death. Give me a second here. And it goes like this here. He stated that "I shall never forget the difference between those who fought for liberty and those who fought for slavery, between those who fought to save the republic and those who fought to destroy it." And those ring true to this very day. I'm seeing this, I come in ninety-two, I'm asked a question about, of all schools that I go to or see, why is Robert E. Lee still named for children that were still shaping in this world? And thirty years later, we're still having the same conversation. Okay? I lived in Virginia, like I said, junior high, went to Yorktown High School, it was not too far away from the battlefield. That's how I learned about who Robert E. Lee was. It was not a very happy thing, because I actually got given a hard time because of that, because of my last name. And my last name is Lee. I don't know if I'm related, we don't know, but that's something I have to carry for the rest of my life because of my name. My father gave me that name, and I'm holding that because of that. But I do not think that the children should have that name on their school transcripts or something for them to be proud of. Now, there are some other names I would think that would be more suitable for the diversity of this school district. And I also believe that it's also something that you may want to look at the future when you decide to bring more diverse faculty and staff into your district, because they do look at school districts, they look at school names. And if you are an educator of color and want to teach, and you see a school named Robert E. Lee, the first thing you're gonna think of, I am not gonna even apply to that school, because I don't know what kind of spirit is in that school, whether it changes or not. And it's up to the teachers, but they gotta sign their names on Robert E. Lee paper, they gotta wear Robert E. Lee t-shirts, cups, anything that that school pertains, and they have to look at that each day as well. I really do hope you guys take all of that into account, because the future educations are looking at the school, and maybe this is something they want to have a home at. But you're going to deter those bright minds that can shape and well mind, well rounder children in the future because of a name. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. I appreciate your comments. Next, we have Audrey Suarez. Ms. Suarez, thank you for being here.
Well, I'm a terrible public speaker, and I think all the things have already been said, so my comment would be pretty short and plain. My name is Audrey Suarez. I am a native of San Angelo, former Lee student, I'm a middle school student now in Lee District. In my opinion, this is nothing new. Twenty years ago, when I attended Lee, it was up for discussion then to change the name. Unfortunately, it wasn't changed, and that was a missed opportunity. And I really hope tonight that I feel very confident that the right choice will be made tonight, and I also want to say that I am prepared to not only donate my own time, my own money, but to help fundraise for... Thank you for your consideration, thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Suarez. I would remind everybody that I do hear a little bit of chatter sometimes, so our recording will positively reflect what everybody says, please. I try to hold your comments. Next up is Ms. Moore, Ginger Moore.
A little bit of levity, I think I'm in the minority tonight. Yes, I would just want you to know that. I actually have read parts of this book, not all of it, but this is from the Robert Lee Reader. It was published in nineteen forty-nine, and most of the students at that time studied the different heroes of that time. And if you read the book, you know that Robert E. Lee was not in favor of slaves. His wife was the granddaughter of Martha Washington, our first president's wife, and she, they inherited Arlington, which later became a cemetery, from the Washingtons. So, he had inherited slaves, which he also freed before the proclamation of emancipation. So, he was not in favor of them. His family was in Virginia, and therefore, he had a choice to make. He was a Union officer, he fought in Texas, he fought the Indians in Texas, he had fought throughout and at Harper's Ferry, he was a hero. And he had to give up and make a choice. So, he resigned from the Army, the Union Army, and went to help his Virginia, his state. Now, I don't know if any of you realize this, but if we had a choice to make between our personal homes and someone else's war, we would probably choose our home. And he was out of the service for a while. Then he went back in, and he did help as a general for the Union. But as soon as it was over with, there was Jefferson Davis who wanted to continue the war, and he said, "No, it's done." And he was willing to help those that suffered from the South. So, he has a history of being a great man at one point in time, and he has an issue with which side he chose. But he has a lot of history. He was the commandant at the University of Washington. He was a famous man of his time, and that's probably why they chose his name. Now, I heard a lot of discussion tonight, and I have been in the education business for forty years. I know a lot of different people, and I worked for the military, so we had a multicultural in the military, it's all multicultural. And I feel for these people I've listened to, I've been moved by it, but we need to teach history, and I think that's where it all started, because they're feeling that they're a victim because their ancestors suffered from Robert E. Lee. But currently, currently, you're not a victim, you're only a victim if you make yourself one. I didn't grow up rich, I grew up poor, but I worked, and I went to college, and I went to masters, and I worked for the military, and I brought myself up to a higher level. And I think that that's what we need to teach our children, to bring them up to a higher level. And to not change a name, I think we need to keep the name and maybe take anything off of there that looks like Confederate. And I don't think they've had a Confederate flag there for years, but somebody that's gone there recently, is there a Confederate flag? Do you have a Confederate flag at your school? Anybody know? Has anybody gone to the school?
There's one at your protest.
Easy, easy.
Well, that was not my protest.
Ramon, that's improper.
It's okay. I will answer that. I was, I saw that flag and I was horrified, if that helps you. It was not my flag. But just to let you know that the Confederate flag and anything else can go, and we need to just leave Lee and leave the history of the school, and we don't need a plastic case for the history, we need to just keep Lee and change whatever offense. And anyone can be a rebel, I was probably a rebel, I got a lot of Air Force regulations changed. I mean, you can be a rebel in a good way. So, I'm just suggesting that we come to a compromise and try and do something that will leave the school alone as much as possible and change it to take care of any issues they have. And most of those children do not even know who Robert E. Lee is, which is very sad. I think that's the, the history is the sad part. And if they'd like a book for their library, I have one that tells you the very beginning and what a great statesman and military strategist. He was an engineer. He was a great, great man, and because he chose the wrong side, does not take away from his military strategy. I think it was Teddy Roosevelt said he was one of the greatest generals ever. So, that's my speech for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
And I do understand everybody's thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I appreciate those thoughts. Again, I remind everyone to kind of refrain from making comments when someone's speaking. Next, we have... Next, we have Mr. Flores. Willie Flores?
I'm here.
I see you. Come on forward.
Thank you, guys, for letting me speak. I'm hoping I'm the last one, because I don't want to be here too much longer. But, and I feel the pain on both sides. Ms. Reed, you know, I heard you, and it's sad. But to me, Robert E. Lee died 150 years ago. Slavery ended 150 years ago. Slavery ended 155 years ago. And the reason slavery is alive and well today is because y'all keep talking about it. We keep talking about it. Morgan Freeman said, "Yeah, that's how you end slavery, racism, you quit talking about it," you know? I'm not for the name change because of the fiscal aspect of it, you know? And if we start there, what's next? You know, John H. Reagan? There's probably other schools here in San Angelo, streets and stuff, you know, it's just crazy. A name on the building ain't going to make your kid any smarter, you know, changing the name. It doesn't have anything, I mean, I'm, I'm for taking rebel off the jerseys or whatever, and quit calling the, deal the Confederate, you know? But as, as far as all the other, man, we need to just start getting along, start loving each other, you know? I've got black friends, I've got white friends, and hell, sometimes they don't like me, and sometimes I don't like them, but hey, in the end, we're still friends, you know? We need to make this work, and it's, hell, my daddy took me down North Chadburn, South Chadburn Street, and he goes, "Hey, boy, we're right downtown San Angelo, see that building over there?" And I'm in his truck, I'm like six years old. I said, "Yes, sir." He goes, "That building used to be a restaurant." I said, "Well, did you ever go eat there?" He goes, "No. Blacks and Mexicans had to go to the back of the building to get their food, whites only," you know? I said, "You never ate there?" He goes, "Hell, no, the food was better at home," you know? My daddy didn't have a problem with it, but he didn't dwell on it either. So let's get over this, get this done, and start moving forward. And the money, we can use that 75,000 to better educate our children. That's what I'm all about, you know, as a kid, because the bottom line is the child's education, you know? It's not the name on the building, because he didn't, Robert E. Lee didn't have nothing to do with me or them, because he died 150 years ago. Now, their grandparents, great-grandparents, or whatever, my great-grandparents, maybe, but they've been dead a long time, too, you know? So let's get on with this and make this world a better place, man. That's, that's, that's it. All right? Thank you, guys. Y'all got a hard one.
Thanks, Willie. Thanks, Mr. Flores. We appreciate those comments. This is our normal process, is, do we have anybody else that didn't sign up that would like to speak? I'm hoping not, but, yes, ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry, you're on my list. Ms. Spears, I'm so sorry. Thanks for being here, Ms. Spears.
Thank you for having us. I was trying to make sure that everyone who had previously not had an opportunity to speak would have an opportunity to speak this evening, so I'm glad that I'm kind of at the end, or at the end, or whatever. Again, I want to thank the board for such an enlightening experience that you all have just taken the community through, to try to get the information from the community before you make your decision. I'm very impressed with what you went through and all the different steps, and I hope that you heard all of the different sides and that you are ready to make your decision, because that's what we've elected you to do, is to make the hard choice and to make the hard decisions. I want to just reiterate some concerns that we seem to, some of us are not focusing in on, and that is systemic racism, that while slavery happened a long time ago, that's true, it did, and that slavery ended as far as a constitutional end in 1865, there is still systemic racism, therefore, there's still slavery. And a lot of us who, most recently, I will say, who are old enough to recall the civil rights era of the 1950s and 60s, myself included, although the civil rights movement is still going on, is something that we need to think about. I remember segregation, I remember being in a segregated environment in schools, and I remember when the school board would come to the colored schools and all of the best students, the smart students, the ones who were mannerable, were able to make presentation of some sort for the school board who came to the colored community to our schools. I'd like to see that that never happens again, and that we are in an integrated environment, but we don't act like we're in an integrated environment. We need to ensure that our children, our teachers, and any person that works at any school in San Angelo ISD believes that they are worth something, that they have self-worth, they have a sense of belonging in this community, regardless of the color of their skin, regardless of their history, because as one of the speakers said earlier, we're taught things at home, all of us, black, white, and brown. So you can't just say, forget something, and teach the history, because the history at this point has never been taught properly. If you're going to consider history, let's go back to Revolutionary War and consider who the first person was that died in that war, which was an African-American man by the name of Christmas Addox. So if we want to be inclusive, and that's what I hope that you all are thinking of, we have to include everybody. And we have to, to the best of our ability, make sure that we're not hurting anybody. And so I hope that you have thought about all the things that we've experienced over the last four months, and that you will make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spears. And again, I apologize for skipping you. Anyone else? We will move forward. Item 10. I think what we'll do is, this is all right with the rest of our board team, will have a motion, or if there's no motion, then we'll move forward. But I would consider a motion to either retain the name of Robert E. Lee or to rename the name of Robert E. Lee Middle School. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Lehman? I don't know if you can hear, I can't tell on my microphone. I'm going to make a motion, but I'm, I ask everyone's patience, because I'm going to make some comments also. I think this is maybe seventh or eighth time we've had open comments by our community, and I think our administration for allowing that to happen, and for the Equity Summit that we put on to give others in the community a chance to speak on this. I personally have learned a lot by hearing others. Sometimes the best way you can be a leader is to listen, and we've listened. And I do appreciate all that have given comments, and I appreciate all that have been polite to others giving their comments. I think we've all learned something from this. I have close friends and relatives on both sides of this issue. I know that when I leave here, I'm going to, I hope not lose friends, but I'm going to probably disappoint friends, because I can't make a motion that can please both sides. I have to make a motion today that's not just based on Max Parker's beliefs, but on what I think is best as a school board member, a school board trustee, as to what's the best for the children of our school. I wanted, I've gotten several emails that start off, "I know you've been threatened, I know you've been pressured," and I want people to know, I've not been threatened, I've not been pressured. I've had dozens of emails, they were all well-stated, and persons that have spoken to me in the community have not pressured me in any way. I do not look at this, I know some of you do, as a political issue. I am not going to try to make sure one side or the other wins, or one side or the other loses, you know? I have to keep my mind focused as to what's best for the children of our school. I've read, tried to educate myself by reading dozens of articles and excerpts from books. It's been a great learning experience for me. As I said, I'm an attorney, and I listened in on a webinar while we were doing virtual with our office, and the webinar had to do with attorneys, and it said, "Sometimes you lose cases, and you don't understand why the jury could vote the way they did." And yes, that's happened to me. And he used this famous phrase that I had not heard before, which was, "We see things not as they are, we see things as we are." We see, we see things not as they are, we see things as we are. And basically, was saying that everybody has their own experiences, their own education, their own training, their own Facebook groups, their own TV news channels that they watch, and they connect their dots about what they know and what they're experiencing, and we sometimes connect our dots and come up with different conclusions. But we feel passionately that we've connected it the right way, and that others may not have connected it the right way. And that's part of what's going on here. Many of you are very passionate on your side, and you have difficulty understanding why someone else could be feeling the other side. And I'm trying to, as best I can, learn both sides. There was an article that was written a couple of months ago by General Neller, who had just retired as the Marine Commandant for all the Marine Corps, and he wrote a letter to America, is what he entitled it. And he, in it, he said, "We should use interest, we should use introspection and do our best to understand why we all have different opinions on these issues involving racial inequality." And I'll quote, he mentioned what black Americans should be thinking about, which was, "You need to peace of, if you're going to protest, you need to do that peaceably." But he said to white Americans, which is speaking to me, he said, "Even though you believe you're not racially prejudiced, and that you raise your children to judge others by their actions and values, not their ethnicity, you have to try as best you can to understand the views of people of color who are just tired of the real injustices they live with every day. Things that you either have not seen or cannot see, that is their reality." Many of you have mentioned that reality. Many of you have spoken from both sides, saying the other side needs to learn their history. So I tried to look at my history and the history surrounding this issue, so that I could better understand and do the best I could to make the right decision. So first, I looked at my own personal history of how I would have connected the dots before this started. And I grew up in Comanche, Texas. Some of you may know that, may know that city. I had no blacks in my class, there were no blacks in the city, there were no blacks in the county. I played against blacks from other schools, I think they were all treated with dignity and respect, I enjoyed the competition, I don't know what their viewpoint was on it. I went to the University of Texas. I was fortunate enough, when I went there, to be chosen as a walk-on on the football team, which was coached by Darryl Royal. There was one black player, one black player on the whole team, the very first black player they had ever had on the team. The year before I'd come, University of Texas was the last school to win a national championship with an all-white team. And I was only a walk-on for four weeks, I got hurt. That black player was named Julius Whittier. He became an attorney, a very prominent attorney, he died two years ago. And he was the first black player to become a letterman at the University of Texas, and the University of Texas is going to put a statue of him in their museum at the stadium in the, in the years to come. My grandfather, my great-great-grandfather, was Edmund Jones II. He died in the Civil War, fighting for the Confederacy. All my life, growing up in Comanche, I always was on the side of the Confederacy when I'd play with my brothers with the little toy soldiers, and Robert E. Lee was my favorite. This is family. I didn't know much about the war, I knew very little about slavery, but that's what I grew up with. So I didn't have a lot of experience with what black persons might, what their reality was. My children, I have five children, they all graduated from Central, and they were all in athletics, and they would bring their friends home, and many times, we had African-American black children in our home, and they were very nice. But I just say all that because I realized I am not going to be very good to connect all the dots, to know all of what everybody's feeling, just based on my experiences, by the way I see things as we are, as me. So that's why I tried to study more, to try to get a better concept of what everyone is feeling. I studied the history of Robert E. Lee to try to know more about Robert E. Lee. As I said, he was my hero. I knew that he was a great technician, that's why I wanted to be Robert E. Lee when we played soldier. He was always the smartest, he was the best. I knew that when he surrendered, he surrendered humbly, he surrendered nobly, he gave Ulysses S. Grant his sword, he asked for permission for his soldiers to be able to keep their guns, so they could go home and use that for hunting and be able to support their children. He surrendered because he did not want any more men to die. I did not know that he had ever owned slaves, but when I studied that, it doesn't appear that that was a big thing in his life. He only held a few in maybe his name, and then he, his wife, when her father died, he was chosen to take over that plantation and run the plantation, which was in severe debt. And the will supposedly said that in five years, all the slaves were to be freed, but some of the slaves said that the master of the plantation had told them when he died they were going to be freed. So there was a, there was an argument about that. And Robert E. Lee did free the slaves after five years, but he didn't free them on the death of the master. And supposedly, when some of those slaves ran away, as an example to others, he had Some of you have mentioned, and you're correct, that Robert E. Lee, I don't think he liked slavery. I don't think he had a heart for that. He, in a letter to his wife in 1856, he pens, he wrote, "Slavery is a moral and political But in that same letter, he also stated that slavery was a greater evil to white people than to black people, and that black people were better off living enslaved in America than living free in Africa. Many of you said, and I wanted to believe it, that Robert E. Lee really didn't have a choice. He loved his states, and at that time, the United States was only 80 years old, and there was still a lot of, excuse me, people that favored states' rights versus the rights of the United States, the federal government. And he chose, when he knew there was going to be a battle, to leave the Union Army and go to Virginia, which he thought would be to defend Virginia from the Union Army, but the Confederacy fired the first shot at Fort Sumter, and it was the Unions coming to defend the battle that had been started by the Confederacy. He went to West Point, he was number two in his class. He had a lot of friends who were graduates of West Point, many from the South. But 49% of the West Point graduates that were from the South when the war broke out fought for the Union Army. They didn't fight for the Confederacy. Sam Houston, who is a great hero, fighting for the rights of the state of Texas for in the Battle of San Jacinto for Texas independence, later became the first president of the Republic of Texas, and the third president of the Republic of Texas, and the seventh governor for the state of Texas, loved the state of Texas as much as anyone could love their state. But he was the governor when Texas put it to vote for secession, and he voted against it. it. And when he would not take the pledge to the Confederacy, he was kicked out as governor. So he made a different choice than Robert E. Lee did. And this is something I read that I, I know some of you mentioned, but it made me think. It says, "What if the South had won the Civil War? Slavery would have been preserved. Our flag would be the stars and bars, not the stars and stripes. We would not say a pledge to the flag which recites, 'I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.'" We would have a pledge to the Confederate flag. Now, also, wanted to study the history as best I could of what was going on in 1949 when Robert E. Lee Middle School was named. I couldn't find much. I did find the minutes of the meeting. I did find the articles that were written in the newspaper. There wasn't a lot mentioned about it. At that time, we had seven men on the board, I'm assuming all white men, a white superintendent, because there was not much diversity even with women at that time. The board minutes read, "The school was named on May 17, 1949. The new junior high was named Robert E. Lee Junior High, and the old junior high was renamed Thomas A. Edison Junior High." They were both named on the same night. Now, what else was going on in 1949 at that time? I have, I know the names of those seven members of the board. I'm not going to mention it because I don't have anything bad to say about them. I don't have any evidence to show that they were racist or had any ulterior motives when they named it Robert E. Lee. But Robert E. Lee was going to be an all-white middle school, so keep that in mind. But what else was happening in 1949 was that the black men that came back in World War II, just four or five years before, had fought for the freedom and thought that they would have better rights when they came back, and they didn't. They couldn't get jobs, and when they got a job, they couldn't get jobs that paid as much as a white man. There was segregation in the armed forces. They had to fight in black army groups. They had segregated transportation. Black restaurants, white restaurants, black churches, white churches, white restrooms, black restrooms. They couldn't get elected to office because at that time, there was not any single-member districts. Not many blacks registered to vote because they'd been what's called disenfranchised to vote. Blacks that went to trial rarely, if ever, had a black on their jury. President Truman ordered integration of the armed forces in 1948, a year before the school was named, and that caused a big uproar in the country. In the 1948 Democratic Convention, President Truman, Truman had part of his platform was desegregation of schools. That outraged many of the Southern Democrats, and they split off from the Democratic Party and formed the Dixiecrats. And they put up Governor Strom Thurmond from South Carolina as the candidate to run for president for the Dixiecrats. And his stump speech, which was pretty famous at the time, would say this, "All the bayonets of the army cannot force the Negro into our homes, into our schools, our churches, and our places of recreation and amusement." President Truman won, but Strom Thurmond carried four states, Southern states. That was top of mind, I'm certain, in the state of Texas five months later when they're naming this school. As I said, that school board may have thought there will never be any minorities going to this school. I can't criticize them at all. Now, I looked also at the demographic changes since 1949, and I think that's important. In 1949, there were 640 students in the school, all white, no blacks. In 1968, about 20 years later, this, this, it's very difficult to find this information, but at that time, there were 975 students. Eight hundred and twenty-nine were white, 25 were black, and 37 were Hispanic. So it's still almost a totally white school 20 years later. Now, I think these figures are either from 2018 or 2019. We have 1,130 students, 339 are white, 55 are black, and 705 are Hispanic. So it's 62.4% Hispanic, 4.9% black, and only 30% white. It's been a huge change since this school was first built and first named. Now, also read articles that was like, why is the black community, why is the name Robert E. Lee and the Confederate flag so kind of lightning rods when things happen to them? In the year 1900 up to about year 1930, the blacks were having to contend, as some of you've mentioned, with Jim Crow laws, which were the separate but equal, like I mentioned. Everything segregated, where you sit on the bus, where you sit on the train, where you can go to eat, where you can go to church. But they also, as I said, there was disenfranchisement going on. They were not encouraged to vote. They were discouraged to vote. They had to pay poll taxes. They had to take literacy tests to be able to register to vote, so not many blacks were So some of the blacks began protesting. They kind of had the start of the civil rights movement. And when that happened, that's when most of the monuments that were built up until 1930, from probably 1920 to 1930, most were built for honoring Confederate generals. The blacks knew, they felt it, when they, when they started protesting, these monuments go up. And the monument that was by far the number one was Robert E. Lee of the Confederate generals. In World War II, when the blacks came back, as I mentioned, and they started having the problems that I mentioned with the desegregation movement, with the, still having problems with being able to get jobs and so forth, and that's when the, what's called the modern civil rights movement started. Then, that's when the schools started being named, because we're talking about desegregation. That's when schools started being named for the Confederate generals. From 1948 on is when most of the schools were named. A little over 50, 52 is best I can count, schools were named for Robert E. Lee. The closest any other Confederate general in number was Stonewall Jackson with 13. It was by far Robert E. Lee, whose name was being put out there. He had become a symbol, along with the Confederate flag, to many blacks and to many white supremists, a symbol for white supremacy, slavery, and segregation, or segregation. I've heard many people, and I've studied this, about erasing history by changing a If we change the name of Robert E. Lee, are we erasing history? Well, as I said, the night that Robert E. Lee name was put on that middle school, we had Thomas Edison name put on the middle school. We changed the name of Thomas Edison Middle School 10 years ago to Central Freshman Campus, and to my knowledge, not one person came to protest that name change, and no one said, even though they probably graduated from Thomas Edison Middle School, that they thought their history was being erased. If changing the name erases your history, then all my history in Comanche, Texas has been erased because I can't go show my children my elementary school, middle school, high school. It's all gone. It's all been changed. The hospital I was born in is gone. It's changed. The church I grew up in is gone. It's been changed. When I moved to San Angelo in 1977, my office was in the Continental Building. Right next door was Penny's. It's now Myers. The drugstore on the corner is now Fuentes. The West Texas Utilities was across the street. It's now the Transpacifico Railroad Building. Holcomb Blanton, where we got all our supplies, is now the Zero L. Hemp Hill Wells is now the Stevens Library. Central National Bank is Wells Fargo. Sears Building is now the Ed B. Key's Library, or Ed B. Key's Building. A name on a building, when it is changed, does not change history. This building that Robert E. Lee's name on was built to educate children. It was only when it was nearly completed that they put a name on it. They didn't build this building as a monument or a tribute to Robert E. Lee. When we talk about the cost, if we wanted to change the name, we asked Dr. Lettloff to give us, not to fudge on the cost, and he didn't. He said $75,000. But when he says it's been budgeted, I think you need to understand this. He said it earlier, but I don't know if you caught it. Out of that $75,000, $62,000 of that is for uniforms. That's budgeted because we're going to spend $62,000 every two years on uniforms, whether it's Lee Middle School or anything else. That money can't be used for education or academics or so forth. It's going to be used for uniforms regardless of what the name of the school is. The only money that's new money is about $2,300 to repair and take the Lee name off the gym floor, and $9,000 for a new marquee. So that's the, that's really the money. It's going to be about $12,000 or $13,000 to change the name of the school. That's going to be what you would call new money. All right. I told you, and I really haven't changed my mind in a lot of ways, I have the highest respect for Robert E. Lee. Robert E. Lee is not, in my opinion, the cause of this. What would he say if he was here today? Now, I don't have to make this up because I can use his own words. He was asked to go to Gettysburg for, when they were going to have some memorials there in 1869, and he didn't go. He said, "We don't want to do this. Not to keep open the sores of war, but to follow the examples of those nations who endeavored to obliterate the marks of a war, to commit to oblivion the feelings from that war." Now, I'm not the best on vocabulary, but when he said, "We should endeavor to obliterate the marks of a civil war," I looked up obliterate, and that means to destroy or wipe out anything that's a memory of that war. And to commit to oblivion the feelings of that war, oblivion means to completely forget. There's a man named Jonathan Horn who wrote a biography of Lee called "The Man Who Would Not Be Washington." And he says, "Lee believed countries that erased visible signs of civil war recovered from conflicts quicker. He was worried that by keeping these symbols alive, it would keep the divisions alive." Underlying it all was one rationale. The war had ended, the South needed to move on and avoid more upheaval and not cause more division because of these monuments or other symbols. So as I said, I don't think we're here because it's Robert E. Lee's fault. He didn't want his name there. And I think what has happened is we have a situation exactly as he predicted, something that his name has now become a symbol, that is a lightning rod for white supremists when something happens in the black community, or to the black community when something happens in the black community, along with the Confederate flag. And I think Robert E. Lee would say something like this, "I'm honored you have my name on this building, but if you had asked me in 1949, I would have said, 'No, don't put my name on that building. It's going to cause division.'" And I today say the same thing. Take my name off this building. It's causing division. Now, that's the Robert E. Lee that I know. That's what I think he would say. Now, I looked up the school board in 1955, who, when San Angelo desegregated. Some of you, I heard at some of those meetings, that summit meetings, said, "Oh, there was four of the same school board members that were in 1949 with, were on the 1955 board." No. Again, I don't have anything bad to say about the board of 1949, but the board of 1955 was completely different, seven different men, and a completely different superintendent. Whether they would have chosen the name Robert E. Lee in 1949, I don't know. I'm not going to guess on that. But I will say the names of the board members in 1955. Frank Poole was the president. I can tell from his obituary, he was aged 37 at the time. Marion Balch was the vice president. Homer Jordan was the secretary. Alvin Hay was on the board. He was 35. Dr. W. T. B. Roundtree, Earl Smith, was aged 35. Kurt Steib, aged 35. Now, those that I knew the ages and looked them up, I knew all those men. Frank Poole, Alvin Hay, Earl Smith, Kurt Steib. When I moved to San Angelo, they were probably in their 50s, and I got to know all of them, not that well. Frank Poole, I just knew he was a very honorable man. He was a young man when he was president of the school board. Alvin Hay is John Hay's dad, but he's a accountant, and I always had the utmost respect for Alvin Hay, a man of integrity. But the two I knew the best were Earl Smith and Kurt Steib. Because when I moved to San Angelo, those were the two district judges for San Angelo and the men that I had to practice and try cases in front of. Earl Smith was a deeply religious man, attended the Church of Christ. Kurt Steib was also very religious, was an Episcopal. And they would both take me aside after I tried a case, and I began to look forward to it, win or lose, and they would tell me how I could be better. And they would call Mr. Webb or Mr. Stokes and compliment me when I did well, and give them, ask them to give me pointers if I didn't do well. They were my mentors. And I remember a meeting that we had at somewhere. I don't remember what was going on, but when they were probably my 65 or so and I was 35, someone asked them, "When you voted for desegregation in 1955, one of the first school districts to ever do that, wow, that was a big deal. What was going on in your mind?" And I think it was Judge Steib that said, "We were just young, and what we did was based on, we just, that it was the, how do you say, it was just the right thing to do. It was just the right thing to do. We had no idea that other school districts were going to fight desegregation for 10 or 15 years. We didn't know we were going to be one of the first. It was just the right thing to do." So as I said, I think the problem here is not Robert E. Lee, or even what Robert E. Lee did in 1865. It's what's happened with his name since then, and it's been put in the forefront with the monuments, with the schools, all that being done during the time of the civil rights movement that has now caused his name to become a symbol of racism, white supremacy, segregation, along with the Confederate flag. Those are the two lightning rods that I can think of. Not his fault, but it's a reality now. And I think with the present demographics that we have in this school now, I think it's time to change the name. Will that eliminate all the distractions? I don't know. I don't know. Will it eliminate distraction for some of the students? I hope so. I pray it will. Nobody knows for sure, but I think, right now, it's the right thing to do. So, Mr. President, here's my motion. And this is my wording on the motion. I think it's time we retire the name of Robert E. Lee from Robert E. Lee Middle School, and we rename it. That's my motion. I don't think Robert E. Lee needs to be hung in effigy. I don't think that this should be a great celebration, that the wicked witch is dead type thing. I also agree with those that I think, this is not a motion, but this is just a request, that we do in our library, we have a Civil War section. We allow people to donate whatever they want to that section to make it the best Civil War library in the city. And that we also have another section, it's the history of our middle school, and we let anyone to donate whatever they want there to help them make that a, that we remember Lee Middle School. I also think, and I agree with those persons, when we, if I get a second to this motion, which I might not, and if this motion passes, which it might not, but if we do that, I think the new name should not be of a person, but should be like some of the names that were mentioned, Legacy, Unity, Lone Star, Contra Valley Middle School, Twin Mountains Middle School, whatever, but not for a person, or we very well could be back here some board at some point in time. Now, lastly, I have one other thing. Few friends I may still have left out there. I'm going to probably lose them now. For Max Parker, if this passes, there's not going to be any domino effect. This is it for me. For those that have mentioned John Reagan, and we need to change John Reagan Elementary School, I'm not going to entertain a motion for that. John Reagan is not a name that is a lightning rod for slavery, segregation, white supremacy. John Reagan was a member of the Second Legislature of Texas. He was a state district judge. He was a U.S. Congressman from the Eastern District of Texas. He did speak out at the, at the secession for slavery and for secession. He was chosen as a postmaster general for the Confederacy, mainly in charge of getting communications around. He was taken after the war to a federal prison in Boston Harbor for six months, and while he was there, he wrote letters back to the leaders of Texas that said, "You need to admit slavery was wrong and to allow blacks to vote, or things are going to get very harsh during Reconstruction." And the leaders of Texas laughed at him and, and wrote him off. And after they found out later that he was prophetic, that everything that he predicted came true, then they did, others in Texas encouraged him to run again, and he was elected back to the U.S. Congress. He was one of those that helped raise funds and helped get to complete the Washington Monument. He was the chairman of the Committee on Commerce that was responsible for passing the Interstate Commerce Act, which is one of the most important acts that was ever been passed by our federal government that regulated railroads. He was elected to the U.S. Senate in nineteen eighty-seven and then appointed by Governor Hogg to be the chairman of the newly formed Texas Railroad Commission, which supervised Texas railroads. And later, he founded the Texas Historical Association. He died in nineteen oh five, and we named that elementary school for him in nineteen oh eight, before there was Civil Rights actions or anything else. He was named one of the four greatest statesmen in the eighteen hundreds in Texas, along with Stephen F. Austin, Governor James Hogg, Sam Houston, and John H. Reagan. John H. Reagan is not known for anything that's not, he's not a lightning rod. He's not really known much for his, what he did in the Confederacy. So I'm not going to vote to change that name or any other name of any other school that we have at S.A.I.S.D. because of those same reasons. So I'm just saying that, that's my feeling. I'm not expressing the feelings for the rest of the board. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Lehman, I got very long-winded, and I apologize for that. I just wanted everybody, whether this motion passes or not, to be very clear that I've done my best to study this issue and the reasons that I have made this motion. So I'll leave it up to you now and see if anyone cares to second the motion.
Second?
Thanks, Mr. Parker. So we have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos. I think those of you who don't know, Mr. Parker would certainly understand why he's such a great attorney. He covered a number of issues there. I would ask any of our other board members if they have anything or any particular comments that they would like to make at this, at this time. Dr. King?
All right. I wrote mine down because I'm not as good as Max. And I figure, like Max said, there's no, and everyone else is lined out, there's really no way to win, quote-unquote, on this subject. So to my friends who I'm going to lose with, I want it to be my words that are the reason that people judge or don't judge what I say and not anyone else's. So first, I want to thank all the community members, staff, and students who expressed their thoughts and beliefs through this process. Second, to those of you on the school board who have the honor of serving alongside, I am proud of the work we have done to improve our district literacy program and promote student success. When joining the board, I did not anticipate nor desire to focus on the names of buildings or how to implement a safe return to school for our students and staff in the midst of a global pandemic. I'm certain none of y'all did either. I appreciate the citizens, parents, and students' patience as the school district has navigated this complex time in our nation's history. As we move towards a vote on this issue, it is important that each of us votes our own conscience and that we respect the views of others as to not limit our primary goal of promoting student success. As to changing the name of Robert E. Lee Middle School, there are several aspects that I have considered during this process. I do believe our local history should matter, and that men and women of all races have played a role in our shared history. Our founding fathers created an amazing country, albeit flawed, which has allowed for the progression of thoughts and ideas while preserving our values. The self-evident truths in the Declaration of Independence create a framework for an incredible union. The value of that history is important, must be taught and cherished. But as President George W. Bush said, "A great nation does not hide its history, it faces its flaws and corrects them." I think the same holds true for this great community. It seems to be human nature to belabor our disagreements rather than celebrate our common bonds. Oftentimes, we distrust those who think differently, when in reality, as a community, we agree on many more topics than we disagree. I do not believe we can hold men and women accountable for sins and transgressions that were morally acceptable in their time. Robert E. Lee was a great general and a respected man in his time. Grant's actions at Appomattox, Lee's time prior to the Civil War, and his time at Washington College are all testaments to this fact. Seventy years after Lee's passing, the Greatest Generation returned from World War II, and over the next twenty years, significant gains were made for equality in our country. In our own community, as Max outlined, we adopted desegregation of schools in early time in Texas. Over my three-plus years on the board, the name of Robert E. Lee Middle School has been raised multiple times, albeit never to this level. I do not know the motivation behind naming Robert E. Lee Middle School. I do know that it is reasonable for people to believe that a school named in nineteen forty-nine to honor a Civil War leader has something to do with the political climate of that time. In naming a school eighty years after a man's death, we are naming a school for a symbol. I do not pretend to know what the symbol meant in nineteen forty-nine to those men, but the reality of symbols is that they can come to mean different things in different eras. In our, in our era, the symbol of Robert E. Lee no longer represents the man or his most admirable qualities. In looking across S.A.I.S.D. schools, I consider the name Robert E. Lee as the only symbol that does not promote unity in our community. I believe the last several months have brought that to bear. We cannot and we should not rename everything to a benign inanimate object. We should not rename based on namesakes later realized flaws, because even the worst parts of us help form us. That said, we should consider a name change when the symbol departs from properly representing and honoring that person. I will vote to change the name tonight, but no matter how each member of this board votes, I look forward to the continued pursuit of improved schools to give all of our students the best chance to succeed.
Thanks, Dr. Kingman. Other comments from our board? Ms. Mizell Flint?
Hi. I'd like to also thank all of those who have spoken throughout this entire process. It's been such an honor to be part of it, to hear all of your words, and I especially wanted to thank all of you who spoke tonight. My sixteen-year-old son, who attends Central, is here, and I'm just so proud to have him see the best of San Angelo. So honestly, I have to say that, in the beginning, this vote was, was, was a struggle for me. In the beginning, I thought it was going to be an easy decision, but I listened, as I listened to every impassioned speaker and read all your emails and your texts and your Facebook posts and met you at HEB, I began to more fully understand both sides of the debate. A couple of months ago, an eighth grader, I think, from Lee Middle School spoke, and she said something along the lines of, "Some kids in San Angelo go to a middle school named after a man who freed the slaves. Some go to a middle school named after a great astronaut, and I go to a middle school named after a man who fought to allow people to own slaves." And hearing these words made me think, if this student feels this way, how many others do? How many other students and families have felt uncomfortable going through those doors over the years? We've received and read many messages over the past several months, but one in particular captured my thoughts, and it so perfectly reflected my thoughts that I asked the writer if I may read her letter tonight, and she agreed. It went to the entire board. Dear Mrs. Mizell Flint, first, I would like to thank you for serving on the San Angelo Independent School Board for so many years. I feel like it can be a thankless job much of the time, but please know you are appreciated for your service. At this time, I would like to address the possibility of changing the name to, of Robert E. Little, Robert E. Lee Middle School. As the parent of two former students and as the past president of Lee PTO, I can appreciate the school for its spirit of academic excellence. I believe renaming the school will in no way negate its educational integrity. The values of the Confederacy and of Robert E. Lee, who has come to represent the rebellion against the United States of America, are not the values I want instilled in our students. These are not the values I want to represent our community in general. Romanticizing the Confederacy with naming rights on a public school is disrespectful, especially to a portion of our students whose ancestors would have continued to be enslaved had Robert E. Lee and the Confederacy won the war against the United States of America. As a community, we can do so much better than lionizing this incredibly dark period in American history. San Angelo in 2020 represents the best of what West Texas has to offer, welcoming people, an inclusive and diverse community, and opportunities for everyone to thrive. As a community, we have an opportunity and an obligation to choose a name that better reflects these values. We cannot change our past, but we can choose to end the celebration of the part of our history in which a rebellion caused so much pain and death in our nation. At this time, we have a chance to make a change that sends the message that we care about all of our students. It is within our power to do the right thing and send the right message. Thank you for your consideration. Jackie McDonald Martin. And I just, the only thing that I could add to that is that, as a member of the Jewish community here in San Angelo, I'm also very much a minority here in this town, and as such, I was able to relate to much of what has been said by others in, of my, other minorities in our community. And I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate your words and I appreciate your courage. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mizell Flint. Anyone else?
Mr. Lehman?
Mr. Dindel?
I was going to go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Gerard.
Okay. First of all, I just want to say thank you for everyone that participated in all of this. I was speaking to Amy and Max earlier, and I just said, you know, this has been a process, a big process, and it's, it's democracy and work, at work. This is what everyone, our grandparents, our ancestors, this is what they have worked for us to get to, to move forward. And I think, you know, I'm not going to say a lot, but I know that, that, that everyone, there were lots of great speakers that we heard and, and their comments, and, and I think there was one that a good friend of mine said, and I don't know if he's going to agree with me, but he, he made a comment way before all this started. He always just said, "It's not where you've been, it's where you're going." And I understood it at first as, well, you know what? You know, he's right. It's not where we've been, it's where we're going. But the more I thought about all this, the more I read about all this, the more I read on the history of all this, in a way, he was right. It's, it's not where we've been. That's all done with. We need to move forward, and we need to go forward. My father once told me, when I first got on the board, he told me, "Son, I know you're impassioned about this, you're impassioned about that, and you're getting mad about this, but the most important thing you're going to have to do when you sit on a public board like this is you're going to have to vote for what's best for the school district, what's best for the employees of that school district, and what's best for the future and going forward for that school district, and especially for the children of that school district." And that's what I've always thought, that's how I've always voted, what is best for the kids in our district. And I feel that, that, you know, I, I'll tell you right now, my vote will be to change the name. And I just want to just thank everyone for being here, for, for the, for the process, for the process. And it was a long process, and it was a great process, and it was democracy and work, and everyone's voice was heard, and people came to the table and spoke up. And that's what I was proudest of, is how many came here and spoke, regardless of what they said on either side. I was just proud of the fact, in our community, they cared enough to come over here and speak. And I thank all of you for that, all of you. And so that's, that's all I have to say. Thank, thank you again for helping us do our job. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gallegos. Mr. Dindel?
Sure. Most has been said, so I'm going to try to cut out any portion that I would duplicate. But in the beginning of the summer timeframe came a petition to address potentially naming Robert E. Lee Middle School. It's not the first time that I've heard this subject brought forward during my term on the, on the school board. And at that particular time, the school board was busy trying to manage opening schools safely, providing a valid dual-focused curriculum, and now addressing this name change process. It's unfortunate this process became somewhat divisive and adversarial, because there seemed to be no common ground to base the decision. But according to the school policy, it was in, in the wheelhouse of the, of the board to make that decision. Unfortunately, opposing sides view Robert E. Lee with totally different perspectives. So in that process, we initiated, initiated engaging equity program to seek input from all parties concerned on how we should proceed. I think this board has diligently participated in this process to try and sort out the best possible solution to this issue. Obviously, there'll be a portion of our constituents that will be disappointed with any solution that we reach at this time. I personally have spent much time and many nights reading emails, perusing articles, and also researching information provided by a number of sources, as sounds like Mr. Parker and Dr. Kingman have done also. And I've centered and sought through all this information to find balance, excuse me, find valid, unbiased facts to make a best decision. And after many nights staying up and much soul-searching, I've decided to support renaming Robert E. Lee Middle School. But in my study, I've also studied the other names of many of the schools in San Angelo, and I, at this point, I don't think that there's a name out there of another school that I would support changing.
Thanks, Mr. Dindel. Art, you have anything to say? Okay. I'll, I'll close, and, and I really appreciate the rest of our board team, and I want to apologize to a number of people that have written me- to a number of people that have written me in the last four or five days. It's my job as the president of the board to respond to all those, and I did a pretty good job of that, but the last four or five days, I've probably received a minimum of about 45 emails from folks, and I didn't, in every case, fulfill my obligations as the board president. So, as a member of this board team, I want to apologize to them and also to others that I didn't take the time to do that. Not because their opinion didn't matter, just because I didn't have the time to do so, because everyone's opinion didn't matter. I do find it interesting that Mr. Parker mentioned that he never received any threats or anything like that. With the exception of today, I could say that was true, too. I had somebody today call me and tell me, I won't tell you what side of the issue they were on, they just told me that I would regret any decision that I made, and I told them that, asked them if that was a threat, and they said, "No, it's the truth, it's not a threat." And so, you know, that's, but that's neither here nor there. And I want to address another myth that I've had in a number of correspondence with me, and that's that this issue's never come before our board before. As the longest-standing member of this board, I can tell you it's come before this board on a number of occasions, and we've sought solutions that we thought best suited our community at that particular time, whether those were right or wrong. In every case, I think our board considered that as an important part of our job. One other group that probably frustrates me is that the political side of all this. They say that it's a politically sensitive time, so you can't deal with it, or you shouldn't deal with it, or you should deal with it, and why haven't you dealt with it before? I'd like to take the politics out of it. What I'd like to do is do what I'm sworn to do as a member of this board team, and that's remember every single student in our district. And my obligation, people who know me and know me well, know that I'm kind of a budget watchdog. I got on the board because I was upset about the way we spent money. That was 19 years ago. I'm proud of the fact that Mr. Dindel and a number of the other members of our board helped me in that watchdog role. I feel really good about how we spend our money, and to me, it's an easy decision for us to make, to delay, to move forward buying athletic uniforms by one year and make some very small other expenditures in order for us to make every student feel welcome in our district. So, and I love what Mr. Parker said about, and others have said about General Lee. I think he's a highly respected person, no matter which side of the issue you're on. But for some reason, and maybe rightfully so, he's become a symbol of everything that was wrong with one of the darkest periods of our history. And as a history major, I would tell you that even in this room, people who are sincere in every way writing history, we could leave this room and have four or five different views of what happened here tonight. So I want everybody to respect, history's a big deal to me, and I have a great deal of respect for that. And I went to Lee, I walked across my alley and across Sherwood Way to go to Lee Middle School, at that time, Lee Junior High. I was surprised by the numbers that Mr. Parker mentioned in 1967, because that's when I was there. I went to Lee Middle School from '67 to '70, and I had a number of African-American friends, but when I tried to think of the names of those African-Americans, I could only think of two. Both of them played sports with me. One's name was Ivan Cole, outstanding running back, and the other one, many of y'all will know in our community, one of my most respected friends and someone that I care for dearly was Ronnie Hawkins. And we played sports together. Beyond that, I couldn't call them friends, but I've called them friends beyond that period because I had the opportunity to get to know them outside of the school environment. In Lee's defense, if I would have been asked, as a citizen of Texas, if I was asked today, if the state of Texas voted to secede from the Union, and my brother and my family were part of that decision, and they decided to succeed, succeed, it would be a very tough decision for me. I might know what was right, and I might believe in what's best for our country, but it would still be a really tough decision for me to decide to leave behind my state that I'm so proud of and leave behind my family on one side. I've been really impressed by the attitude that in our public forums that our administrators and teachers of color have had. They brought new insight to the questions that I might have had. And I guess where the buck stops for me is again with a student. And to me, if any students offended by this moving forward, then I would take that as my responsibility that we could have done better as a board. I don't know what was going on in 1949. Mr. Parker gave a great explanation of that. I don't know what happened in a short period of six years. I do know a number of the men that he mentioned and have a huge amount of respect for those gentlemen that made a decision for us to desegregate. I'm sure it was a tough decision. We face a tough decision, and one that I'm excited, not excited, but proud that we as a community have addressed it together. So I thank y'all for your patience this evening, for listening to all of us speak as board members, and with no one else wishing to make any comments, I'll call our motion. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Hernandez.
I wasn't gonna speak because I'm against changing the name, and not because I don't understand the history. I do understand what Max was saying, and he was a lightning rod, but Hispanics are in the same boat. You know as well, nowadays, they're still not being prosecuted, but they're still being harassed, they're still being mistreated. I remember when, I wish I could have been on the school board when they closed down Edison Junior High. I mean, at least this is just a name on the school. They got rid of my school, and I asked, I went around asking, "Can anybody tell me what happened to all the trophies?" Because I ran track. We had one of the fastest relay teams in the district when I was there. Well, I think they said that everything was thrown away, and to me, that was like, Edison didn't matter, because Edison, they said, one of the things I heard was a bully school, that there was too much fighting, you know, and that hurts me, too. But if I had let that affect me, I don't think I would have been here today, you know. I go through struggles, I've been mistreated at my job, you know, in the past years. I'm just gonna mention, I was in the office with a family, and then somebody tapped me on the shoulder and they said, "We need for you to step outside," and I thought they were gonna tell me something, and they said, "Oh, they don't want a Hispanic in there, they want a white counselor." And I could have said right there, "You know what? I'm out of here, I quit." But I didn't, you know. I just keep moving forward, you know. I never, I go through struggles, but I never let anything get me down, and I taught my kids the same thing. My brother, when we were young, we were mistreated in elementary school. You know, one of my brothers, they told him that he was never gonna succeed in school for him to just quit, you know, but he never did, and now he's a successful young man. And I know where the struggles come from. I know, you know, that the black community were mistreated, but Hispanics are also in the same boat, and this is nowadays. I have family that have worked here, and because they missed one day in their expiration of their visa, they gave them seven months. So I can see my family for seven months, they couldn't come over, you know, from Mexico because of one thing that they did, you know, with their visa, that they went over one day and they couldn't, they couldn't let it go. They said, "Nope." He said, "Seven months, you can't come back to the U.S.," you know. And I see a lot of Hispanics coming to the U.S., even though, you know, if you go to the fields, they're getting paid peanuts, you know, and people mistreat them. "Oh, look at those people working down in the field, and they don't have nice places to go sleep." You know, they work all day in the fields, and I wonder how many of you have seen that movie McFarlane? These kids, they got up at 5:00 in the morning to work in the fields, they ran track or cross-country, and then in the weekend, they were out working the fields again. And these kids could have said, "You know what?" They even had a prison right there built right next to the school. But they didn't let that affect them. They had, I don't know how many, state titles, they kept running and running. They were one of the best teams that had ever gotten into the cross-country team in California, but they never gave up. The coach told them, "You can be whatever you want to be." They all went to college, they all became somebody, but because they didn't give up because they were mistreated. When you're mistreated, you pick up and, you know, keep on going. You can't let, and I know, you know, what the black community, the struggles they've gone through, because I've had a lot of friends, when I was at Edison, I think the majority of my friends were black. I was little when I was at Edison Junior High, I was tiny, but I think I had, I can't remember how many I have, but I had like four, three or four black friends that, they were like my bodyguards. I remember one time, some guys wanted to fight me, and like in seconds, they were right there, you know, they protected me. So I've had friends of all races, you know, when I was in college in California, I had Vietnamese, and I was already, you know, in my twenties, and I was going to this college, and some guys wanted to fight me, and this guy reminded me of Bruce Lee, he protected me, you know. But what I'm saying, we all go through struggles, and the reason I want to talk because I don't want, because my vote is gonna be different for people, I'm gonna lose friends, too, you know, but I gotta vote, like you say, what my heart is telling me to vote, and I'm voting because we all go through struggles, white, blacks, Hispanics, doesn't matter, we all go through struggles, but it seems like the black community has had the hardest struggles, you know, but we can't let that stop us from becoming somebody, you know. When my dad was alive, that's all he talked about, the wars, the Mexican wars, how many Hispanics got killed, you know, the Alamo, the Mexican-American War, you know, thousands of Hispanics got killed, but, you know, we're still here, we're still here in the U.S. Why? If we were mistreated, we were killed, why are we in the U.S.? Because we just keep moving forward, you know. We want to become somebody, and most of these families that come to the U.S., they want to become somebody, you know. At least you guys can go back, you know, to Africa or wherever, but Hispanics, they can't go back to Mexico, you know. Sometimes they feel like they're locked here, or they can't come over here. So the only reason I wanted to say, because I don't want to feel like I'm voting against it because I don't agree with what you guys are saying, I do agree with what you guys are saying, you know, but we all go through the same struggles, we're all in the same boat, but we just have to move forward, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hernandez. So any further comments? If not, the motion is that we rename Lee Middle School, and as Dr. Detloff outlined earlier in our discussion, or earlier in our evening this evening, he talked about what our board policy allows moving forward. So I'll call our vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
No.
So Becky, would you record the vote as six to one? And I would encourage anyone who has a name that hadn't expressed that previously, that they would like for our board to consider. Now would be a great time for you to submit that to the district, not tonight, please, but now would be, now, beginning between now and our first meeting in November would be a really good time. And then at our second meeting in November, we'll have our regular, based on board policy, it has to be at a regular meeting, so at a regular meeting, we'll submit names and the board will make a choice at that particular time, and then we'll finalize that choice based in December. So we have one other item on our agenda. Again, I appreciate everyone's patience and the manner in which we've been able to conduct this discussion this evening, I really appreciate that. Item 11 is to consider superintendent recommendations for personnel.
Move to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, and a second?
Dr. Detloff and members of the board, we had intended to bring a recommendation to you this evening, but did not have one to bring after all, so you actually don't have.
That's what I thought, it was just a placeholder, so.
Withdrawn my motion.
Just wanted to clarify.
So, that is a placeholder, and I should have realized that, Dr. Gomez, I apologize. I will make some announcements. Our November 9, 2020 financing bridge, and the board workshop is scheduled on that day, and November 16 is our regular board meeting. One final thing that I'd like to say, and Dr. Kingman referred to this specifically, and that's student performance, and even though this has been a really tough process and one that I've learned a lot about, it's time for us as a district and as a board team, and as a community, to embrace the success of all of our students. And the way we do that moving forward is that we provide opportunities for all children, that we don't, I don't have a problem with someone stating facts about where we stand in a ranking system, but it is frustrating to me as a board member that if you go to Texasschools.com, you'll find out that we rank in the top 40% of schools, not in the bottom 20%. If you go to SchoolDigger and look up their results, on their very front page of SchoolDigger, it tells you that they're a really poor way of determining performance of kids in all school districts. That's their own disclaimer on their page. We have a lot to do for our students in San Angelo, but for our community to only recognize the most negative things that our students are doing is a detriment to our students. And I was told this week, and I don't know the exact numbers, the military is in 157 school districts. I think that's right, it's over 150. And Stanford University came up with a criteria list of determining who the best school districts are. We were in the top third of that group, so we have lots of things to be proud of as members of our school district, as members of our administrative team, and as members of our public. When we start celebrating those things and celebrating what's good about
When we start celebrating those things, and celebrating what's good about all of our students, I think we will see, we will immediately see some, some success. And we start recognizing success, success breeds success. So I, as this, as the board president, and other members of our board team, are convicted about making sure our students are making significant strides in their academic performance. And I would ask you, as a community, to join us in that effort. And with that being said, and here having no other business, we'll stand adjourned.